First of all, welcome to our April 16 Town Board Meeting. And 8A is sworn testimony for the Town Center. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, the invocation will be given by former Bishop Brian Evans from the Church of Latter-day Saints, Jesus Christ in Apex. And he has somebody to introduce that after or before or during.
Do it before.
Welcome back again.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Yes, as many of you know, in the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, we have a lay clergy. No one is paid to do anything. So individuals are asked to serve in different capacities such as teaching the kids, or directing a choir, or teaching the youth. And one of those callings, if you will, or positions to serve in is bishop. I was asked to serve as bishop, or the lead of the congregation, for five years in my time. I'm not anymore the bishop. Now I play the piano for the kids when they sing songs, and teach the high schoolers a study, Bible study group before they go to high school. The new bishop I want to introduce is Bishop Jim O'Neil in the back.
I do. You're going to be up next. No, not now. Not tonight, but...
He leads the congregation for the Holly Springs Ward. There's actually four congregations, depending on where you live in Holly Springs, that you could attend for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And the reason I say that to the Town Council is if there's ever a need for volunteers, emergency, anything, he's your guy. He can get between 800 and 1,000 members of the church together in a couple of hours, and we will bring our friends with us.
That's incredible. I've heard that before.
And so if there's... If there's ever a need, he's your man to contact. Please let us know. We are more than willing to do anything we can for the community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll pray for us. Our loving Father in heaven, we are grateful for this evening. We are grateful for the opportunity to be here at this Town Council meeting. We are so grateful for all those who serve this community, for their time and their efforts. We are grateful to be here tonight in safety, to have the opportunity to discuss items of importance for our town. We are grateful for our elected officials, for the time that they put in, and for their sacrifice. We ask thee to bless them and their families, that as they make decisions about our town, that they will have best interests in mind, that they will be able to be of clear mind, sound mind, to make decisions that will bless the lives of our community. We ask for blessing upon all those who are here tonight, that they will also be watched over and protected, and that as members of our community, we will look for opportunities to help one another, to stop along the way, to help those that are needy, or sick, or afflicted in any way, that we may have thy Spirit and thy blessing poured out upon us, so we may be able to share love one with another, develop lasting friendships and relationships. We are grateful at this time for our Savior, Jesus Christ, as we celebrate this Easter season, and his sacrifice. We are grateful to be here tonight. We ask that thy Spirit will be here, and that the decisions that will be made will be carried out appropriately and in a timely manner. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Brian. Talk to you later. Thank you. Item number four is just for approval, the April 16, 2019 meeting agenda, mayor pro tem, if this is working. Having a little tricky stuff tonight. There you go. Thank you.
Make the motion to adopt the April 16, 2019 meeting agenda with the following changes, to defer item 10D to a later meeting.
Second.
Motion made in second of all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Item number five is a public comment period. We have seven people signed up. I think there's a couple people going to be spokesperson. I'm not sure of that. But if you have something to say that's already been said, you certainly could pass. So I'm going to call up someone I know, Susan Morgan. You want to start the whole person, or somebody else? Say what?
I'm Stephanie Embry.
You want to go first? Go ahead.
Hello.
Name and address is you. No.
Hello, Mayor, Town Council. My name is Stephanie Embry. I live at 304 Mistwood Hollow Circle here in Holly Springs in the Wildwood Community. And I would like to ask everyone who is here from the Wildwood Community to please stand up or raise your hand if you're already standing.
Oh, wow.
Thank you, everyone. So we are here tonight about the Lowe's site plan that is before you. And as all of you probably remember, we were here last fall for the master plan. And just to give you a little recap, last fall, when we learned about Lowe's coming in, we had conversations with Sean Ryan and with Rachel about some concerns we had about the master plan. All of you were kind enough to come out and meet with us, to see the community, and Travis and Todd from Lowe's were just fantastic. And through a lot of conversation, we got to what we thought was a really good place with the master plan that worked for everyone. And we are, again, really grateful for the effort that Lowe's put in on that. As part of that master plan that was approved, Lowe's is going to need some waivers for some pedestrian and parking that relates to the third lane that we requested. So we strongly support those waivers and ask that you grant them to Lowe's as part of this site plan. During the master plan process, we were told that some of the questions we had, some of our concerns, would have to be addressed at the site plan level, and that we would just have to wait. And also, at the time of the master plan, we didn't know who the grocery store was. We have learned it as Wegmans. We are thrilled it is Wegmans. I have never met so many people excited about a grocery store in my life as I have been since people found out it was Wegmans. So we are thrilled it is Wegmans. But when the site plan was released, we came to Sean, again, so patient, whatever you're paying him, it's not enough. He has worked with us, I'm serious, he has worked with us tirelessly through this, listening to our concerns and answering our questions. Travis, again, has been working with us on our concerns about the site plan. So what we are here to do, you, again, have come out and seen our neighborhood. We really appreciate your time and dedication. We think we're really close. And again, we want to stress that we are aware that this property was zoned commercial before the Wildwood was ever developed. It was always going to be a commercial development. We are all very pleased that if a commercial development is coming in next to us, it's going to be Lowe's and Wegmans. So we support this development. We are simply asking for your assistance, that we get these outstanding concerns, some of them are fairly significant, with the site plan, so that we have a development that works for everyone and works for Holly Springs. So I'm going to yield the floor now to the next speaker. Thank you again.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
All right, going down the line, Kim Tilleren?
Susan.
Passing?
Susan.
Oh, you, I see. You want Susan now? Yeah, it's okay. Whoever wants to go.
(Inaudible).
That's right. Again, name and address, please.
My name is Susan Morgan. I live at 508 Wildwood Farm Way in the Wildwood Community. I also want to point out that the planning board heard us before we learned about Wegmans' store hours and delivery operations. So the planning board passed plan without us being able to speak on those concerns.
Thank you.
I'm going to go over a few points that are pretty quick and easy. They're not necessarily the most important. We talked about with the planning board, a stipulation for abandoning the access road and terminating the easement when it's no longer needed by the fire department. The sole purpose of the easement is for the use by the fire department, and that's per a conversation and an email with Rachel Jones. She also, at the planning board, said she would stipulate for that termination. Lowe's is placing a gate with a lock at the curb behind their stores. We need a taller, more solid acoustic gate to block noise. The gate there would also reduce loitering and prevent the pass-through of public vehicles. So we would like the gate to remain in place after termination of the easement. And Wayne Strickland from the fire department is okay with a solid gate as long as the lock system is similar to the one that is on the master plan. Or on this site plan, I should say. Lowe's is also, seem to be in agreement with adding the buffer plants. Once the access road is closed, there is a rear buffer yard that currently is open, and they will close that with the proper plantings. We would like a fence acoustic in nature, maybe 15 feet high along the back of Lowe's. This topic seems to have been overlooked. There is a high-traffic pattern where all the trucks come from 55, and they will be using air brakes to change their speeds, they will be shifting gears to get around the building, and the daily high volume because Wegmans does not have a distribution center. So there's going to be a high volume of trucks running behind Lowe's. In addition to that, they do have loading spaces right near the access road, and so that's going to be noisy as well. There's delivery spaces for vehicles, and an outdoor storage where forklifts are going to be used. There would be backup noise from the alarms. There's a generator, a compactor, all creating noise behind the building. And there's also something we maybe have not talked about, but there's noise from the delivery doors when they're rolled up, when they receive the deliveries. So what we think would work, and maybe not be too much of a burden for Lowe's, would be to use the north section of the chain-link fence, bring that up behind the curb or at the curb, make it a solid acoustic fence 15 feet tall, because their elevation is 20 feet above the community, so we need a taller fence. And that fence, we need to run from the emergency access gate to the west corner, and it can tie into the lower portions where the stormwater facilities chain-link fences. So the cost difference shouldn't be too significant. And so our red arrows show how that could still connect, and they can continue to use the chain-link fence for the three out of the four sections there. They're going to be planting deciduous trees there along the back of the building. We would like those to be evergreen trees to capture more of the noise. And the ordinance for parking spaces below the building require compact evergreen buffering per 7-01-L1. There is a Wegmans sign at the back of the building that we would like removed from the plans. Only Wildwood will see it, and we already know where Wegmans is going to be. They don't need the sign, and there is a store in Maryland that supports that they have removed the signs before. Wegmans, we've requested them to modify their delivery schedule to be in line. We would like it to be more in line with what Lowe's deliveries are, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. They want to stock the shelves before the store opens, but we have residents who are going to be sleeping during those deliveries between 1:00 AM and 5:00 AM with generator trucks running, so we need the delivery times to be modified to not disrupt the sleep of the residents that are 50 feet away. And then, we would like consideration for the store hours to be in line with Lowe's closing at 9:00. They're open until midnight, and they also have an outdoor café that will be open until And again, you know, for safety with the neighbors, and for us to just be able to have a restful night's sleep, that minimizing that activity would be very helpful. We'd like a sign preventing trucks from using Wildwood Farm Way at the planning board hearing. Lowe's and Wegmans didn't seem to think that they would be able to control the independent truckers, so we need a sign with violations, violators will be fined if they use Wildwood Farm Way. I think everyone was in agreement, we didn't want the commercial vehicles on that road. There's access from Ralph Stevens and 55 Highway. And Costco uses these signs, Costco in Apex. We would also like the trucks to park in the front of the building if they're there overnight because they've arrived before the store opens, or arrives too late for deliveries and are going to stay overnight. The noise from arriving will disturb people. The backup alarms for them to position their trucks in the space they want to snuggle into for the night will make noise, and they will disobey no idle signs, which will cause noise and air pollution, and again, 50 feet from the residential property. So if they can park in the front of the building, that will not disturb the residents. Lowe's said with a conversation that they would not be using light poles at the back of their building. We would also like them to consider not using light poles in the parking aisle between the two buildings, because those lights will be seen by the residential community. We'd like them to use wall-packed lighting instead, and place them either on the fence or attach them to the building but below the fence height. And we would like the programmable lights to be used in the parking lot that I believe they mentioned at planning board. We believe an eight-foot fence is not enough. Lowe's was going to provide an eight-foot fence behind the Wegmans area, but the truck heights are 13.5. Wegmans is going to be 15 feet, I believe, to 20 feet above the residential community. And the truck motors themselves are going to be six feet high. So an eight-foot fence, there's going to be a lot of noise that's going to get over an eight-foot fence. And again, Wegmans does not have a distribution center, so there's high volume with the vendors. And they stated they have no plans. Currently, they have no plans for a distribution center. So this activity is going to go on for a long time. So we need to improve the visual and sound barrier for the constant truck movement, including the backup alarms, and all of the other concerns I mentioned earlier. A taller acoustic fence is needed. The ordinance is 10 feet, but to hide the trucks, 15-foot acoustic fence on a berm to make that fence even higher with dense plantings is actually what would best beneficial the community. We'd like the fence to run, again, behind Lowe's, behind Wegmans, and around the side of the café, to keep the outside café from viewing the community pool. And this helps to keep the residential community separate from the commercial property. It's an effective sound barrier. The Federal Highway Administration says the most effective noise control is to use a combination of a berm, a fence, or a wall, and dense plantings. Using a high berm and the fence and the acoustic gate at the emergency access road with the dense plantings will mitigate the sounds through absorption, the reflection, and the diffraction of the sounds. The berm will benefit, because then it also will deflect the noise up, which is not something that the trees or the fence will do. So that's a great benefit to the community. The greenway increases the noise behind the residence property, because it is a solid surface, and the noise will bounce off of it and deflect back into the residential property. Urban nights are 40 decibels. Trucks are 90 to 110 decibels. The freezer generator, we asked for decibel readings. We still don't know what they are. But those generators are going to run for an hour each time a delivery is made, three times a night, so three hours out of the night. To reduce the decibel readings by 10 actually cuts the noise in half, and vice versa. So if we increase the decibels, we're creating twice the noise. 80 decibels causes hearing damage. The greenway, if it's placed currently where it's supposed to be located, would be in violation of the Unified Development Ordinance for community business, because the greenway goes nowhere. 3.05, 3.6 is the ordinance. And also, the residents are not getting the required dense buffer as designated, on the designated buffer space. All the plantings must be at a minimum of 20 feet in the buffer yard, all stacked together, not separated by the emergency access road and the greenway. We're getting 15 feet because of the greenway. For proper growth and health of the plants, it does not need to be planted under the current minimal Wildwood buffer near the critical root space for those tall pine trees that don't provide a buffer for us but do exist in that space. We need the full 25-foot buffer yard in order to get the buffer that is required by the ordinance, 7.01C, .3, .C. Three rows of trees planted together in 25 feet. Lowe's would be able to improve the specimens as well. They've had to select smaller trees because of the limited space there. So the plant points are a mathematical equation. So C150 is not always the right answer, and for this prototype development project, it is not the right answer. The loading docks are 50 feet from the residential community, which are people's backyards, and the master bedrooms, which are at the back of the house. So the most important thing is to get a berm with the highest elevation possible, and Lowe's engineers can figure out what that elevation should be. And we need the whole 50-foot space behind the residential homes for the, from the property line to the curb. We need a 15-foot acoustic fence on top of it, constructed in a way to maximize the space for dense evergreen buffering, planted at the highest elevation and working down to the bottom. We want those areas to include behind the, or west of the loading, west of the access road, behind Lowe's loading dock, and the compactor, below the grocery store, and extending all the way around to the side of the café, again, to block the café from the pool. Blocks the view, reduces the noise. It would be very aesthetically pleasing, so when people drove into our neighborhood, they wouldn't be looking at two buildings, but instead, a lovely evergreen berm, and that would even hide the 15-foot fence. So it shifts the focus off the large buildings on the hill, and it definitely improves the separation of residents from business. No other large community business sits atop a residential development in Holly Springs like this one does. Yet there are berms all over Holly Springs providing buffers. Dense, deep plantings exist, both adjoining properties as well. Some communities have both, we have neither. Some of them have fence, berm, and dense buffer. Some even have stone or brick walls. The greenway opens in a blind curve and near the open café, which is open until midnight. This invites late-night activity behind our homes. The café and the parking lot are in direct view of the community clubhouse and pool. The greenway prevents much-needed berm in this, for a high buffer, and a buffer which would block the parking lot and the outside eatery from watching our children play in the community and at the pool. A berm is good for the kids, so it's good for Holly Springs. We propose, I'm sorry, we have tree-lined sidewalks and walking trails throughout the neighborhood. We do not need a greenway, and we do not want the greenway. We have a petition with over 100 signatures that was achieved in three days. And we can submit that if needed. So we proposed in a plan in January to prevent the loss of even more trees by running the greenway in the open spaces, and also allowing for the proper buffer on the side buffer yard. And we pointed out that this current buffer was not in line with the ordinance for the landscaping, and no changes were made. The greenway interferes with Lowe's and Wegmans being able to comply with a noise ordinance, because a berm with dense evergreen, in addition to acoustic fence, will buffer all the noises effectively, but the greenway is in the way. It's not going anywhere. It doesn't adjoin the properties. And with very different intensities of use, these neighborhoods, being good neighbors, we definitely would benefit from Lowe's being able to provide us what we need. And again, the greenway violates the ordinances. At the planning board, we proposed an alternate greenway once we saw the development plans of Wegmans. That changed everything. Our concerns shifted. It was no longer just the greenway on the lower portion. There are tremendous amount of loading docks, and the elevation, we weren't aware that they were going to sit so high above our community. It provides, so the proposed greenway would run from Wildwood Farm Way, cross over to Ralph Stevens Road, cross the 55 Highway, which already is going to have a pedestrian crosswalk and pedestrian lights for safe crossing. And it connects us to Teal Lake Road, which brings us to the Coral Dean Greenway, which connects us to Bass Lake Park, Suggs Farm, Wamboldt Park, the Hunt Center, connecting east to west, its walkability, its connectivity, and its enjoyment for the community on the west side of the community. So again, we think this connection would be good for the kids, so it would be good for Holly Springs. The large map shows connectivity all around Holly Springs. Using sidewalks is very common. The Morgan Park subdivision uses sidewalks as a greenway. They're the only one, they only have one side of the street as sidewalks. We have both sides as sidewalks. The Sheetz Gas Station joins the residential property at Morgan's Park. There's a fence and a large swath of greenery, and a good distance between the building and the lot use and the residential homes. We are negatively hit on all of these points. The greenway prevents Lowe's from giving us what we need. Choosing the greenway will forever display this inequity for the public to see. We really need our property values protected, and the way of life, and the feel in Wildwood. And we respectfully ask that due to the fact Wegmans did not disclose their design or operations prior to the master plan approval, that the Town Council members table the matter until these issues can be remedied in a more equitable manner for the Wildwood community. And we believe that acoustic site planning should have been done, and should be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, there are other names here. Anyone wishing to add anything to that?
Okay.
The other names are in support, correct? Last call. Anybody else that signed up? Okay. At this point in time, we'll close the public comment period, and we will go to something I've been waiting for, for a little while. Action item is 6A Holly Grove Middle School, Sol for Tomorrow winners. And there's something that I just got today, kids, remember, kids, anybody under 65, right? Talked about that at the schools a couple times. You remember. Got a letter this afternoon from Public Schools of North Carolina. It says, "Dear Mayor Sears, on behalf of my entire team at the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, I want to congratulate the students of Holly Grove Middle School for winning the Samsung Sol for Tomorrow STEM competition. This incredible honor is a testament to their hard work and creativity, and makes our state proud to call them our own." That was signed by Mark Johnson, who is the North Carolina Superintendent of Public Schools of North Carolina. I may give this to Debbie later on, okay? But congratulations. With that in mind, for a starter, Debbie, would you like to come forward with the kids? And this is one of my favorite pictures that just was added today. You haven't even seen this yet. You guys remember this picture? Yeah, I think so. So come up, come forward and speak into the mic, whoever's speaking.
Initially, make sure you let them know what they want. Tell everybody what you got.
So these are, this is your future, and it is so bright. They are so awesome. I'm going to let them speak, but I want you to know I'm so proud to be an educator in North Carolina, and these kids are amazing. They're just sixth graders, and they won $110,000 for our school in technology. Yep, they were top three in the nation, and we go to DC in two weeks to present to our legislators.
Yeah.
So Kaylee, if you'll tell them just a little background, I don't think a lot of people know about, actually, Boston, will you tell them about this picture? Kaylee, I'll pull you from there. So tell them your name.
I'm Boston Harold. So this, we went to New York, and we were at the Intrepid Museum, and we had to present, well, we each, everybody had a table there, and we had to, everybody would come around and ask us what we were about, so we had to, like, do a little pitch about what our project was, and then, like, give it, like, demonstrate and stuff like that for them.
So you tell what the sign does?
So the sign, when the bus is coming, it will start lighting up. So at 400 feet, it will start to flash red, or flash yellow, and then at 200 feet, it will start to strobe yellow, and then at 30 feet, or when it's at the stop, it will be a solid red with a white strobe.
Can you tell me a little bit about, you know, Kaylee?
Was that a yes?
I know she's not shy. All right, can you tell them a little bit about the technology of how the bus and the sign interact with each other? sign interact with each other?
Yeah, so, um, we have an XP on the bus, and we have an Arduino on our sign. And whenever the bus gets within 400 feet of the sign, it will start blinking yellow. Whenever it gets within 300 feet of the sign, it'll start strobing yellow, and then whenever it gets in with 100 feet of the sign, it'll start flashing red and white. This will alert the ongoing vehicles that the stop -- bus stop is sign -- the bus stop is here. It will alert the kids at the bus stop if, like, if they're not paying attention, if they're on their cell phones these days. If they're on their cell phones, it'll alert them to get all their things gathered and to get ready to go on the bus. It'll also alert the bus drivers, like, if there's a sub, with bus drivers that usually have to put on their lights whenever it gets on 300 feet. And so this will alert them that they need to turn on their lights.
During the test, this young lady was on WRL. How many -- how many people? WRL was one, ABC was another, and she spoke for the group, most of the group, and she doesn't like to public speak. She's very shy.
No, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm only kidding. You did a great job.
You can stay up here. Okay, so that second picture is when we won Community Choice. The gentleman on the far right, I believe they were from Kentucky? I think Kentucky, and they had won the prior year, the Community Choice Award, with everyone in Holly Springs voted for us, which gave us the additional $10,000, and that was the prior year's winner of that award, as well as they were a national winner, which is kind of rare to win both. So we were so thrilled and honored that we won both of those. I'm sure I'm crying. That's me in the picture. So do we have a video? Is that what you said? We have a video? The envelope, please.
Move the mouse.
Oh, I have to do something.
So our first national winner of this year's Samsung Solve for Tomorrow is from North Carolina, Holly Grove Middle School.
My name is Rihanna Robertson, and this is Evan in Boston. Today, we are going to talk to you about how our Samsung Safe School Bus Stop Sign has impacted our community, had the use of it. We are sixth graders from Holly Grove Middle School in Holly Springs, North Carolina.
I brought together our local law enforcement, the NC DOT, our school's transportation, and our town council. We want to increase awareness of school bus stops, decrease stop arm violations, and save lives through our Samsung Safe School Bus Stop Sign. We are determined to make technology part of the solution, not part of the problem.
Our sign utilizes an app we designed, which uses GPS to determine the coordinates of the bus. We also use two XPs, which are wireless transmitters. One broadcasts the route and coordinate to the bus, and the other waits for that data so we can hand it off to an Arduino, which is a small computer, which takes those coordinates and uses the Pythagorean theorem to determine how far the bus is from the sign. If the bus is within 400 feet, the lights will flash yellow like this. When the bus is within 200 feet, the lights will strobe yellow like this. And when the bus gets within 30 feet or stopped, the lights will glow red with a white strobe, as you can see here. Then when the bus moves away, the lights will turn off.
That was it. That was it.
Anything else you'd like us to share? Anything else?
Do I?
Anything else you want us to share?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
First of all, I want to recognize a few people. First of all, Debbie Shaleen is the wonderful teacher of the sixth grade. Sixth grade, I might quickly add, is -- these kids are incredible. Secondly, her husband, sitting in the audience, Jay, also had a lot to do with this, especially when you were under the weather a little bit, and we've been here before. So that's that part. The principal couldn't make it tonight. Please convey our regards to her. A sidebar that I hadn't planned to talk about, but I'll be quick, is there was three times that I've been to this school in the last, what, two, three weeks, four weeks?
Right.
But the second one was incredible. The pep rally was great. But prior to that, you've got to imagine, here's a school, it's got two floors, and every kid here walked all the halls with every kid in that school in the hallway screaming, yelling, ranting, and raving to these kids for how proud they were of them. Ms. Debbie and I followed them at a little slower pace, I might quickly add, for some strange reason. But so impressive, so impressive. And I just can't thank all you kids enough for what you've done. I've seen the process, I saw the bus. It's incredible. And bus safety is very, very important. There's a lot of things about bus safety that maybe you don't know. Real quickly, I'll just add a couple from the -- what you get from the proclamation. Eighty-eight percent of school bus drivers that report that cars unlawfully pass stopped school buses, causing student injuries and fatalities. That was part of the whole story. Three hundred unlawful passes referred to as a stop-arm violation, that's when the arm comes down, reported daily, daily, in the state of North Carolina. That's absolutely unacceptable. So you've got your votes, you deserved it. I'm proud of you. We're proud of you. Mark Johnson's proud of you. The whole state is proud of you. So I'll give you that, and I'll also give you his letter to take back. And I think we ought to give them a big round of applause. Before you go, before you go, please stand right over here, because we're going to take a picture for the New York Times. Hey. Does camera work to take a picture? Keep going. Whenever you're ready. All right, you guys did it. What a fun thing and incredible. I think our town is in good shape for the future. That's what I hope you guys believe. Do I?
Yeah.
We'll wait for just a minute.
It'll be the way of the future. We'll have this.
Their presentation was amazing, the way they answered their questions, like blew all the high school teams away. I mean, they were, wow, it was impressive.
Bye, Jay. And thanks, parents. I'm just thinking back of when I was in the sixth grade. Not a chance. Not a chance. We were still using the abacas. Thanks, John. Talk to you later. All right, have a seat, everybody.
There's plenty of seats.
All right. Next, Agenda Item 7A, Request Communication, the Holly Springs Farmer Market Transition and 2019 Outlook, and I'm proud to say it's going to be -- Daniel, you're going to be part of this too, right? I'm going to get first the Assistant Town Manager, Daniel Weeks, and then one of my favorite people. Not that he isn't. Not that he isn't. Yeah, you're my favorite, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Daniel Weeks, and I'm Assistant Manager in the Town Manager's Office. I come before you this evening to highlight the transition of the Holly Springs Farmers' Market from the Department of Planning and Zoning to the Department of Parks and Recreation. There will be no requested actions tonight. This is simply for your information. As you may know, the Holly Springs Farmers' Market is entering its 13th year of operations. And before Jessica Steigl comes up and shares the outlook for the 2019 summer season, we have a few trivia questions that will hopefully provide some perspective on just how far the market has come and the level of success it has experienced over the past 12 years. Are you ready?
Ready.
Ready.
All right. How well do you know the Holly Springs Farmers' Market?
Very.
All right, so you can call out your responses if you would like, or, you know.
Our best require, right?
In what year was the first season of the Holly Springs Farmers' Market?
1786.
2006?
2006.
He said 13 seasons.
Is that five?
Almost.
Was it five?
2007.
I knew that.
All right.
Dark.
How many vendors participated in that first year?
Ten.
Fifteen.
Mayor's very close. Fourteen, fourteen vendors.
That's what I meant.
And to put it in perspective, there were 29 last year, so we've more than doubled. Here's an old photo. Gina, who was the market manager for the first season in 2007?
That wasn't you, was it?
No.
I didn't think so.
Was Gina, I mean, Gina Clapp?
Yep, she did, but it was Robin Fister.
Oh, yeah.
So this was, she's in the green dress here, and she's standing beside the red shirt Carl Dean, former town manager. But this was on opening day of 2007.
Son of a gun.
What was the original impetus to establish a farmers' market?
So people could eat fresh food from the marketplace.
Downtown activity. There you go. You got it. You got it. To promote economic and social activity and enhance the experience of visitors to downtown Holly Springs.
There you go.
Exactly. In what year was there a 15-foot-high shopping cart at the market?
Tam, I remember that. I remember that. 2008.
2008. You got it. That is a very large shopping cart.
Have my fingers crossed.
How many customers visited the market during the 2010 season? This was the first year where we really began keeping somewhat accurate counts.
A lot.
Anybody want to take a wild guess?
4,000.
Good guess. Seven, a little over 7,000.
Woo!
And to put that in perspective, almost 20,000 last year. Big increase. What year did the first winter market open at the Cultural Center?
Seventeen.
Twenty fifteen?
Twenty.
Almost.
Okay.
Twenty thirteen. Twenty fourteen.
That's what I said.
Twenty fourteen. What year did the Chamber of Commerce hold the first artisan marketplace, which used to be on Center Street?
Seventeen?
Twenty sixteen.
Sixteen.
Twenty sixteen.
These are hard questions.
They're tough. They're tough.
I don't think there's going to be any prizes.
Yeah.
They're tough. All right, here's one you can get. How many locations has the summer market had over the years?
Two.
Three.
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 Shoot.
Three. Beside Town Hall.
Could you show these answers first and then ask the question?
Number two was in front of the Holly Springs Baptist Church, and then where they're currently at, in front of the Cultural Center.
Yep.
All right, almost done. What department established, marketed, managed, and operated the farmers' market for the past 12 years?
For planning.
Planning and zoning.
Those are planning, yes.
You got it. Planning and zoning.
Wonderful job.
And final question. How many market days -- Shaun looks so regal here. How many market days has planning and zoning managed since 2007?
Don't have a clue.
We're talking about Saturdays. They've given up Saturdays to manage the farmers' market.
Right.
Almost 325 market days.
Kidding.
All right, I think that was the last question. You all passed.
Yeah.
You all passed.
Is there a prize?
Big prize. Just wait.
All right.
So our overarching goal with these questions was to show the level of dedication, passion, and commitment staff in the Planning and Zoning Department have put into creating and running our very successful farmers' market over the years. Not only has there been 325 market days, there were also weekly events such as Farm-to-Table Chef Series, live music, Little Sprouts Kids Activity Center, Food Truck Rodeos, Shred-a-thons, Master Gardener Series, Founder's Day festivities, Chili Cook-Offs, and many more special events that elevated the visitor experience beyond that of a typical farmers' market. There was the annual process of recruiting vendors, securing sponsorships, social media engagement, and coordinating with other town departments who support the market. The farmers' market location on Main Street and the excitement it generates each Saturday was likely a significant factor in the decision by the North Carolina Chapter of the American Planning Association to officially recognize our Main Street as a great Main Street in the making. This award was presented to the town last year during the Founder's Day Market, if you remember. Other awards planning staff have received on behalf of the farmers' market include being named Favorite North Carolina Farmers' Market for seven years in a row by the American Farmland Trust, and also an honorable mention last year in WRL's Voters' Choice Awards. Maybe a little-known fact is that our farmers' market has served as somewhat of a business incubator for several local businesses. A great example is Baked by Billy, owned by Billy Joe Cochrane, a farmers' market vendor who is opening up her first brick-and-mortar shop in the block, which is currently under construction. In this scenario, the farmers' market has helped fuel the economic vitality of downtown Holly Springs. The original market expanded over the years to include a winter market and later an artisan marketplace managed by the Chamber of Commerce. I'm not sure anyone could have predicted the success the market has realized. Tens of thousands of people have visited downtown Holly Springs since 2007, generating economic activity and creating a social gathering space that has come to be one of the pillars of our community. These things would not have been possible without the creativity and dedication of our planning and zoning staff. So I would like to take just a second to name these individuals, some of which may be here in the audience tonight. So just in alphabetical order, Candace Alford, Caleb Allred, Matt Beard, Kathy Carlisle, Gina Clapp, Angela Parsons, Sean Ryan, Beth Troutz, Melissa Sigmund, Connie Zurich, and of course, former planning and current Parks and Recreation staff member Jessica Steigl, who we'll hear from in just a second. These individuals deserve a round of applause for growing our farmers' market into an amazing success story for Holly Springs. As the summer market opens next month under the leadership of the Parks and Recreation Department, you will continue to enjoy the same well-run market and smiling faces you have come to expect over the years, and you may even notice some new market enhancements. The solid foundation Gina and her team have cultivated since 2007 will assure a bright future for this new program in the Parks and Recreation Department for years to come. And so now with that, I'll ask Jessica Steigl, current farmers' market manager, to come up and share what we can expect for the 2019 season. Thank you.
Hi, Jessica, thank you. By the way, I want to add one name. John Herring, Chief of Police, who provided the donuts in that last picture. Yeah, he gets applause, too.
Thank you.
Jessica, how are you?
That was wonderful. I'm great. How are you?
Good, thank you.
I have the best job in town. I always say that. So Daniel did a great job of kind of summarizing what I'm going to talk about, but I will go over some of the highlights of the season. We're very excited about our -- we're launching an app, and we will be doing pre-orders. You can shop the farmers' market from the comfort of your couch on Thursday evenings. And so maybe if you're one of those soccer moms and you're over at Wamble all Saturday morning, you can preorder and just come through the market and pick things up, which is going to be really exciting. As he mentioned, we have our new location at the Cultural Center. We are outside on West Ballantine Street between the two roundabouts. It's kind of doing its own thing. Yeah.
It has a mind of its own tonight.
I figured it's haunted, I'm going to just not touch it. All right, so as you can see, we've got lots of events and activities. We're going to continue with the food truck rodeos, and we're adding some new events this year. We are really excited. We are really excited. We are partnering with the North Carolina Specialty Foods Association. And that will be taking place, we have one of those in October, and we have one this weekend. So we're going to have a handful of specialty vendors that are just going to be guests at our market, and we are hoping to turn them into regular vendors. So. We also have our customer loyalty program that a lot of people don't know about, which surprises me. That's all right. And so when you come to the market, you just need to come to the information tent and get a punch, and that will get you entered into a drawing for a night on the town, and it'll also win you a fun little kitchen gadget. And I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has them.
For the record, Jessica, do you like your job?
Little bit.
Could you all tell that? I always did.
I have been well-trained by planning and zoning, and I am feeling very confident in my ability to take this over to Parks and Rec, who has been wonderful in welcoming me with open arms. I'm feeling the love, and I really appreciate it. So. And I know the planning and zoning is going to be there if I really need to ask any questions.
You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Just one question. Will that app tell us what vendors are going to be there every week, by any chance?
You can actually find that out on our website. We have a what's coming to market page, and that is specific week to week, what, who will be there and what they're planning to have. But yes, they should be listed by their schedule and what is available at that time. So you won't be able to order strawberries in December.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, if I can add just one brief comment to that, well, maybe two. One is to commend Daniel Weeks. That's the first time in my career I've ever seen an effective use of a presenter ask questions of council and turn the tables. So all done to Daniel. But perhaps more importantly, again, just a recognition of the staff and thank you to Gina Clapp and her leadership and the whole entire planning and zoning department. It really brought a lot of passion and energy, and I think that's reflected in what you see here tonight. And I have no doubt that that passion and energy will continue with Parks and Recreation as they transition and taking on this particular role. So thank you to the group.
Thank you. Jen, item 8A. This is sworn testimony. 18 DP 16 Holly Springs Place. This is Holly Springs Town Center, Pod D. Matt, I think you're up first, then Rachel, maybe? Matt Beard.
All right, good evening.
Good evening, Matt.
So the next item in front of you is a request for a multifamily development plan and the accompanying waiver that we are asking you to consider. As part of the waiver request, you will be conducting an evidentiary public hearing. You will then be conducting a legislative public hearing to consider the development plan for what they are calling Holly Springs Place Apartments. You'll make the findings a fact for the waiver, and then make a motion to approve or deny the development plan. The property in question is located directly behind Target. This is the Holly Springs Town Center Shopping Center. So the Andorra Apartments that are currently under construction on Bennett Knoll Parkway are located right where the mouse cursor is. The site plan shows four apartment buildings plus the associated clubhouse that has a pool. The waiver request that has been submitted is to reduce the amount of parking provided on-site by 10%. As part of that requirement, they have shown a land-banked area, or two land-banked areas, where the additional parking could be provided if there was a time when it was determined that the parking on-site was not sufficient, sorry, sufficient. We have the ability within the UDO to kind of go back and say, we need this parking now, and there's mechanisms to make them actually go and build it. The landscaping meets all of our minimum requirements. The buffering matches that of the Andorra Apartments and Holly Springs Town Center master plan. And they have provided all of the minimum developed recreational open space on-site as well through a number of different means, including kind of an exercise trail where they have different exercise equipment. On the previous slide, we have the clubhouse, pool, bocce courts, dog park, and playfields. This is just a typical building elevation of one of the buildings rather than going through all four of them. They meet all of our minimum standards. The clubhouse largely matches the design of the larger apartment buildings. If you have any questions for engineering, we can have Rachel come up.
Questions at this point?
Matt, just a question on the waiver request. Is that 10% reduction specifically for multifamily projects only? When we see that?
It is not. It is a general reduction request that could be made across a number of different project types. Earlier today, I had a conversation with Gina about kind of if we've ever actually gone back and requested that somebody build the parking, and we have not. That is not to say we do not have the ability to in the UDO. But yes, it could be applied to a number of different projects.
Thanks. What would trigger that, to request to add back those spaces?
If there was an observance of people parking in fire lanes or on the streets, or if we were to receive complaints from residents or visitors to the site, we could investigate, go out and take samples, you know, go out and take pictures of the site and see what condition it was in. At that point, if it was determined that we thought there was an issue, the UDO states that the director would then write a letter to the owner of the property saying that they had 180 days to basically build it. Again, we haven't actually seen that process utilized, but we have the ability.
Other comments or questions at this point? Okay. What about the applicants?
Would you like to go through engineering before that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So with this project, public utilities will be provided through connections on Bennett Knoll Parkway and Old Holly Springs Apex Road. There are existing water lines and existing sanitary sewer lines for connection. The project is also in our reuse service area, so they will be connecting to our reclaimed water line as well. With the project, a downstream sanitary sewer study was completed to assess the impact of the project as well. For transportation, a traffic impact analysis was completed and approved with the Holly Springs Town Center master plan, which did account for this apartment project. With the development plan, a memo was submitted that verified that this apartment project was still within that threshold that was previously approved. And then at our planning board meeting, there was additional information requested. So the applicant has provided a subsequent technical memorandum that is a part of your packet tonight that walks through kind of the intent behind some of the assumptions, and then also translates what was approved back with the master plan into today's numbers, which their transportation engineer is here tonight and can speak more to those numbers if you have questions. It's important also to note that with the project sidewalk will be provided across the frontage along Old Holly Springs Apex Road and Bennett Knoll Parkway. Did you all have any additional questions for engineering?
Is there no road widening there on the frontage? Or is it already widened with Holly Springs Town Center?
Correct.
Okay. And that's the ultimate cross-section that it's widened to?
It was at the time. It's a little, I think the right-of-way is a 100-foot right-of-way. Today, we require 110-foot right-of-way.
And when was that TIA completed?
It was completed, was it 2007?
2000.
2008.
2008 was the approval of the master plan.
And then I believe in 2013 it was updated with the, what are the apartments? Newell Apartments?
Yeah.
Newell Apartments. With the 2008 approval, that projection was through 2013. That was the anticipated build-out at that time.
Okay. Six years. Other questions, Rachel? Apparently not.
I mean, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we do one? It's 2019. The demographics, that whole area has changed.
Sure.
Why wouldn't we do one now? Do you have a good perspective of what the traffic is?
Sure.
What's the reasoning not to do it, I guess?
So it was approved under a master plan. We are currently assessing our TIA policy that it doesn't include an expiration date for our traffic impact analyses at this time. We're looking at revising that and what makes sense and how we can, as town staff require updates such as this, and as time goes by and as we develop at a rapid pace, the requirements need to be more stringent than previously, you know, implemented. So I will defer some of that to the transportation engineer with the project, and he'll be able to speak to that technical memorandum that was provided and what today, what the assumptions in that kind of outdated TIA, how it is relevant to the growth that we have seen.
Good question. Okay, anything else?
So with that, I will pass it off to the applicant.
Somebody here from the planning board? I think so.
Yeah, Courtney.
Is Courtney here?
Yeah, we have Courtney here. Would you like to have her come up and talk to you?
Yeah, please, yeah. I didn't see her. Can't see that far. We welcome Courtney Patterson. How are you doing? Good, thank you. Talk to us, please.
About this discussion, any specific questions or just generally? I think the concerns of the planning board are listed here, but it was really a pretty, it was a great discussion about the need to reevaluate our TIA policy, certainly. And I think that the overall consensus of the planning board, not just with this development, but with development generally, has been that, you know, it's obviously happening at a rapid pace and that we're undergoing the future land use plan. The consultants are redeveloping our future land use plan at the moment. And so by continuing to approve all of this development, we kind of run the risk of interfering with what those consultants come back and, you know, recommend for us. I think that this issue in particular, this development in particular, the main concern was traffic. And then it was also just the idea of, I know a couple of our members didn't like the idea that there was a waiver for parking reduction even requested, that that was unnecessary, and that anybody who coming, anybody who was proposing to develop should adhere to the rules that the town council has, you know, that the UDO requires. So those are the main issues that we discussed at planning board.
Questions? Comments?
Courtney, not listed here, but I saw there was a comment about asking for elevators.
Yes, actually, that was something that came up. I brought it up, but then other members of the planning board did agree that, you know, one of the things that, as we continue to develop apartments in particular, we have a senior community in Holly Springs that are really looking for accessible living spaces. And so as more and more apartments develop, it's an opportunity to provide accessibility for our senior community that we really don't have at this point. And so not just in this plan, but, you know, and in particular, in this apartment development, it might be an opportunity to cater to that community. But as we continue to approve more and more apartments, it's something that we would like the town council to kind of consider whether or not applicants should be including elevators in their master, in their planning. Anything else? Good?
Thanks.
Thank you, Courtney.
So with regards to the elevators, we're going to probably put that on our study list to try and include with the, kind of the next round of UDO amendments to work into our multifamily design features. So these are things that we can't, we don't necessarily require everybody to have, but you would have to have a certain number of them. So you can kind of select, you know, five out of nine of these design features to meet our requirements, and adding that as an option to try and provide some additional accessible housing, as Courtney stated. So unless you have further questions for me?
Are the applicants here? Do they wish to speak?
Yes. We need to do that as part of public hearing.
I can do this. Let me put it this way. They'll open and close the public hearing because no one signed up, and the applicants who are here would wish to speak. I think that'd be a good thing.
Okay. Ron, where'd you go? However many you want.
And gentlemen, if you just please repeat your name and address and what you do, we appreciate it.
My name's Ron Hendricks. I'm with Piedmont Land Design, 8522 Six Forks Road in Raleigh. I'm the civil engineer for the project. We've also got Matt Peach with Stand Tech. He's a traffic engineer for the project. And Chris Carlinow is a developer with Dominion Realty Partners. We'd be glad to answer any questions or address issues.
All right, questions, ladies and gentlemen, and or comments?
The parking waiver, could you just elaborate a little bit on why that's required?
Well, the main reason we requested it, the developers done numerous projects, and they're providing one and a half units per acre. And we really wanted to try to get to that number. You know, the code requires 1.75 per unit. I said per acre, but per unit. You know, but we were advised that we should only ask for 10% and not try to get to the 1.5. So it's just been their experience that they don't need it for this type of apartment project.
I might add to that again. Chris Carlinow with Dominion. This was not just a kind of, hey, let's just ask for it. We're very big on green building, sustainable building. So, and I'll let Matt speak to more of it, but we actually did a study of comparable projects around the immediate area to see how their parking was being utilized. In a lot of our commercial and multifamily developments, we find that there's a pretty good float factor with people coming and going and traveling. So we did a study into, and to Ron's point, you know, the average of 1.5 parking spaces per unit is pretty consistent across all the municipalities in the southeast that we work within. But we just felt like we didn't want to build more impervious surface and lose more green space than was really necessary. But that was really the reasoning behind it. It wasn't just a kind of shot in the dark. We had some methodology behind that, and Matt can speak more to that.
Evening. My name's Matt Peach with Stand Tech Consulting Services, 801 Jones Franklin Road in Raleigh. Want to talk a little bit about the parking study and how we went about it. So I want to say back in late summer, Dominion Realty Partners requested that we take a look at some sites in Holly Springs and kind of some neighboring areas too. We picked three sites, two here in Holly Springs, one in Cary. The reason we went to Cary was it was a development of a similar nature, parkside. So we kind of chose that to be a pretty good proxy. We performed traffic counts at all the driveways for all these parking complexes to kind of look at the ins and outs for traffic coming and going to and from each individual complex. And what we found, which shouldn't necessarily be surprising, is that parking peaks at apartment complexes overnight. So what we then did was we determined the peak parking times, which is about anywhere from midnight to about 3:00 in the morning. And we sent crews out to go count. So we picked weekdays and also weekends to go out and count the cars in the actual spaces. So, we picked weekdays and also weekends to go out and count the cars in the actual spaces. We conferred the number of spaces with aerial imagery, and then we started to run the numbers. There were a few sites that had garaged spaces, we assumed that those were completely full. And then staff also requested us to run the numbers to see if the apartment complexes, because they weren't full, they were pretty close to being full, about 95%, give or take. But staff requested that if the apartment complexes were 100% full, what would parking look like? Anyway, you slice it, the parking that is being asked and actually being provided by Dominion Realty Partners exceeds the amount of parking that we see demanded by these three sites.
Comments, questions?
Yeah, I'm concerned about the traffic. You know, are you looking at data from 2013?
Sure.
Walk me through how you're getting your numbers.
Sure, so, switching gears a little bit, so we, we've done three different memos that we've submitted here to staff. The first one was a trip generation memo, and that was just to check, to make sure that the number of trips that was studied in the overall development for Holly Springs Town Center that were, what has currently been built is still under that threshold, right? And we found that we're still under the threshold there. The other memo that was submitted with regard to traffic was to take a look at the volumes, the amount of traffic that was projected out in the traffic study for Holly Springs Town Center, and to compare that to what data we have available by NC DOT today. And really, what we found as far as the, the traffic, so, the study was done in 2007, so data was collected in 2007, right? The first step to project out traffic is to just to grow it at a certain percent per year, right? And the reason we do that is to account for just total area growth, right? So, let's say Fuquay Marina is growing, there's going to be some traffic coming up 55 from Fuquay, Ainger, those, those areas and maybe further out, right? So we took the counted traffic, and that's in vehicles per hour, and grew that by 4% per year from 2007 to 2013. The reason it was 2013 was that was the date that it was originally envisioned that the development would be fully built out. Lo and behold, there was a procession, I think things kind of cooled off for a little while. So we're a little bit behind that. The second step is to account for any specific approved developments in the area. So those are known developments in the vicinity of the subject development that we account for, and those are in vehicles per hour. We take those straight from TIs that have been submitted and approved by the town and NC DOT. So we account for those, there were five included in that original study. And then we take the total development traffic, right, from the traffic study that was done in 2007, and we add that on. And then we subtract it out, internal capture, which just means the traffic, say if you go shopping at Target and you go and get lunch at a restaurant later, you know, that's what we refer to as internal capture. So we subtracted that out. And then we took a look and converted it to daily traffic. The reason we did that was because that's the best data that we have right now from NC DOT on NC 55. So NC DOT has permanent count stations that they keep on certain roads and they count traffic throughout the year, and they publish that data. So the most recent data we have on NC 55 is from 2017, published by NC DOT, north of Bennett Knoll Parkway is 37,000 vehicles per day. Obviously, it's grown a lot since 2007. But when we go through the different mechanations and we account for everything that we had kind of talked about, the traffic that was studied, the build traffic from the TIA that was done in 2007 was 41,699 vehicles per day. So well in excess of the 37,000 that NC DOT recorded in 2017.
I had some questions about, let's say that we, we move forward and you put in all the parking. Can you tell me, so one parking area would have a retaining wall? Just one area or both, both of the areas that you're looking at?
I believe the area beside the clubhouse would have a short section of retaining wall. The other, behind building four would not.
Because it says retaining wall there, doesn't it, under, behind building four?
What's that?
I see on this map, I can't read the one by the clubhouse, but the other one behind building four, I see something that says retaining wall, number.
That's pointing to the wall beside the building.
So that retaining wall is going to be built?
That's going to be built today. And that's because building four has a basement. So we've got to drop from the main level to the basement. So there's a wall between the midway and the apartment building that comes out around the building.
Okay, how long, how, how tall is that retaining wall?
It's a, at the building, it'll be 11 foot. That's the floor to floor height, and it'll get smaller from there.
Okay, so the cost coming back later to put in parking, is there more cost to come after because you're already around the building and instead of doing it now?
There'll, there'll be some more cost just because it's smaller at the time. I mean, you, there's some economy and scale here with just the cost of grading and asphalt and stone. Then when you come back with a smaller project later, it will cost more.
So tell me about the other, you said there's a retaining wall on the one by the clubhouse?
Yes, ma'am.
And this only, you're only building this if, if parking was for?
Yes, ma'am.
How tall is that retaining wall?
I would guess in the eight to 10 foot range. We didn't do a grading plan as part of this package for that, but my, I believe it would be in the eight to 10 foot range.
Wouldn't it be better to just do the retaining walls now instead of later?
Well, if, if you ever need it, yes. But if we don't ever need it, which we don't believe we will, no. You know, they're, they believe just from past experience and the study showed that, you know, 1.75 spaces per unit is not needed.
Well, I, I, I hear you.
I understand.
I have driven through some of the other developments that are short of parking. So I think other developments have, we could use parking. And I think if there's overflow, there is no room on that road. So it's kind of like this is a shot to make sure that we have enough parking.
Well, the other thing I would add on this project, and Chris could speak to the demographics maybe, but there's a lot more one bedroom units than there are two bedroom. You know, this unit, we have 239 units total, 144 of them are one bedroom. So it's not like it's all two bedroom and the parking needs are, you know, that high.
Well, one bedroom can have one couple with two cars.
It could.
I think that's probably, in our demographics with how many families we have, I think that there's a reason why there's a ratio for parking.
Well, the study, yeah, you want to speak to that?
I can talk to that a little bit if, if it would help clarify a couple of things. So we, we looked at three sites. It was Trellis Point, the Village at Pecan Grove, and Parkside Place. We were able to get the unit types and, the unit types, the share of one, two, and three bedroom units from Trellis Point and Parkside Place. For whatever reason, Pecan Grove didn't feel comfortable disclosing that information. So, we don't, I can't speak to that. But the two other sites, Trellis Point had 16 one bedroom units, 62 bedroom units, and 63 bedroom units. Parkside Place has 138 one bedroom units, 138 two bedroom units, and 18 three bedroom units. So it's fully accounted for in the comparison.
My concern is now's the time to make sure that those retaining walls are built as they should be and get things ready after a letter, I don't know how much teeth we will have later to make sure. Because it's not just putting in parking, it's actually building in structure.
I would just add one comment to that, as, as the landlord and ownership, I think we would be the first to notice, hey, we've got a parking problem when our tenants start complaining. So I think we as the ownership, and if we see our leasing struggling because word gets out on Yelp or Apartments.com or CoStar or whatever the, the social media is, that, hey, you know, these are nice apartments, but parking is an issue, we feel like then it's going to be in our best interest to go ahead and build that out to, you know, head that problem off before it becomes a bigger issue. So, we're fully aware of that. If it becomes an operational issue, the last thing we want is it to impact our lease up and our success over there.
Is this master plan impacted at all by the retaining wall at Target that is needing construction, or needing repair?
That's what I'm, I understand.
No, it doesn't have anything to do with us not wanting to put the wall in, no.
Is it impacted though? Because I drove by the other day and it still needs a lot of work. Is that touching your project at all, or is there any requirements?
No, I believe it's on the, it's on the other side of the property line.
On the other side?
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions or comments? Seeing that? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, as I mentioned earlier, we open and close the public hearing. We're at the further comment period now. So, we open up for further questions or comments internally.
I got some concerns in reference to the TIA. You know, they were looking at 4% growth from 2007 through 2013. For a project like this, I think it's important that we have the right information and updated information on the traffic analysis there. Due to the fact with all the growth that's there today and projected growth, I'd really like to see something solid that, for this project, that we have the right information. So, I just don't want to guess. I mean, we're 2007, 2013, we're at 2019. So, it's just a concern that I have with that.
Yeah, I agree. I think the traffic now is materially different. As a fact, it's materially different than it was in 2007. And a couple of things in the memo that I picked out that were somewhat concerning. The first thing was, in the first paragraph, exact land uses weren't known. This was in 2007 when the initial TIA was done. Well, they're known now, so we can go back and do it now and figure out what, you know, what the impact really is. Background traffic, as you said, was 4%. That was assumed from 2007 to 2013 to estimate 2013 traffic volumes. We're six years beyond that now. Most of the TIs we see today are assuming 6%. We could argue if that's still enough, but, you know.
Yeah.
Science says it is. The part that I'm conflicted on is that the studies in 2013 had more trips generated than what DOT's count was in 2017. So while I don't agree with what's in the memo, the count, I'm, I'm stuck between that, you know? Is there a need to really analyze that some more and determine if there's impact? Or is that enough to say DOT's count in 2017 is accurate enough to say we don't have a traffic problem over there? That's my, that's my question. Right, I guess the safer thing is we should probably know for sure.
I share Tom's concerns for both that and just even thinking about building this out around the parking.
Options?
Maybe Mr. Schifonik can speak a little bit to the current case law?
Um, so, the reason we require TIs, TIs at rezoning is to ensure that before you burden the land in a different way than it's, than it is currently, that the traffic network can support the, the new land use that they're looking towards. This property's already zoned, multifamily, so they're not asking for a rezoning. They're asking you to approve a site plan. Approval of a site plan is a, it's not a legislative decision-making process like rezoning, but a discretion, but a non-discretionary or administrative pro forma. And what it does is you are, here you're doing two things. You're, you're, you're doing a quasi judicial function as to the park, the parking waiver. So you, you can, you've heard some evidence on whether or not there, the facts support granting them a waiver. And it's up to you to judge that waiver request based on the facts that you've heard. You, so you can either grant or deny based on, on the facts that you've heard and your, really your own understanding. You know, a judge such as yourselves can't throw away the, you take judicial notice of the fact that not everybody rents a one bedroom, only brings one car. There's, there's couples that, you know, so that, so there's those type, that type of understanding. Coupled with the evidence that, that you received from the applicant, the Pecan Grove and Trellis Point, where they're operated under the 1.75 space per unit threshold. So you, you can, you can wait, you can weigh out, your job now is to weigh all that evidence and, and make a decision on, on the parking aspect if you choose to. Then the development plan, site plan is, it's just a determination as to whether or not that development plan meets your development, your development plan regulations. And I don't think there's any evidence before you that it does not. So therefore, you know, that, that, you know, if, if you need more information, if you don't think that there's enough information right now and you're not sure if the development plan meets your UDO requirements for development plans, you can table it and get some more information from staff on, you know, their, their opinion on how it may or may not meet your development plan. But development plans are driveway access, curving gutter, road, traffic flows, and those types of things. It's not, you know, unfortunately zoning and rezoning is a time to really be concerned about traffic and traffic improvements.
So we can't require another TIA?
That would be the question.
The TIA would have, the requirement of the TIA would have to be some, so specific to something that relates to this development plan for the number of units. You know, it'd have to be, you know, whether or not you restrict it right in, right in, right out to the, to the site, to worry about good traffic flow into the site. It had to be, it has got to be very specific to the development plan and not to a overall concern about a lack of adequate traffic in the greater area. If that makes sense? So, you know, I think we, you, you could have them sharpen their pencils on the, on the TIA, but it's, it's going to be number of lefts and rights into the site, very, very specific to the site, to where you can make determinations as to whether or not there's, there's adequate traffic flow into the site. But if, if the concern is, you know, there's more than 5% growth in the greater area and we don't want to add any more growth, therefore, we're not going to approve this, this site plan, we all probably ought to talk in closed session about the implications there.
So concerns about not enough parking, the flow of traffic getting in and out, the impact of maybe cars parking on the road that is outside the scope? Or is this something we can ask?
That's very, that is very site-specific, what you just, all what you just mentioned. If, if your fear based on the evidence that you heard is that the site plan is inadequate to address the number of occupants on that land, then, then that, then, then I would suggest asking staff for more information on what the UDO says about adequate parking and, you know, and inflows and outflows, very specific to that site, if, if that's the, if that's a concern of the council. You know, prior to saying, right now, voting as a, as a council that it does not meet your development regulations, I think you need a little bit more information before we do that.
If, if that were true, let's say with everybody here, then tabling it would be the appropriate action, is that correct?
That, that would be my preference.
Comments?
Sounds like we're in agreement.
I, I agree with that. I'm, I'm just wanting the updated information, right? Because we're making decisions on, you know, six, six years ago or, or four years ago. And that wouldn't be fair to us, not having all the correct information there. So that's what I'm asking for. Is what's the impact for that area? So.
I agree.
That can be done.
How would that motion be?
Just a motion to table to discuss compliance with the site plan with town staff.
Is that where we're going?
We'll ask everyone what you mean, do you, y'all agree?
Do you, y'all agree?
Yes.
Looks like it. I would tend to agree. Who'd want to tackle that motion? If that's where we are?
So I'll make a motion to table the development plan for 18-DP-16 for the Holly Springs place.
Second?
Would you make a second all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's unanimous. It is tabled.
Okay.
Thank you.
So not at this time, you know, we can give back to staff?
Okay. Item 9A, consent agenda, Mayor Pro Tem.
A motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Would you make a second all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Item 10A, new business, 2019 strategic plan, Mr. Randy Harrington.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. It's my pleasure tonight to bring before you a strategic plan that you have been working on since this past November. And for those of you in the audience or who may be watching online, the, what is a strategic plan? If I could use a metaphor to describe that, I'd describe it as it's a roadmap that's going to outline those points of interests or those destinations that you really want to go to on the, on a particular trip. So that's one, the, one way I would, I would describe it. But really what it does, it includes four particular components. One is a vision statement. Another is strategic priorities. Another component are goals and then initiatives. And when you look at this particular strategic plan that you all put together, if you want to break it down by the numbers, you have one vision statement, five strategic priority areas, you have 18 goals underneath those strategic priority areas that outline what you expect staff and the organization to achieve over roughly a two to four, two to five-year time period. And then there are 48 initiatives which outline those specific actions that staff and as an organization that we're going to take to achieve those goals and those strategic priorities and the overall vision that you have set for the town. So tonight, if we can add, remove the next slide, please. So tonight, what we're requesting is adoption of the strategic plan. And let me just outline a couple of brief components before we, we jump into your conversation. The next slide, please. So again, the, the vision statement, as you have created, is Holly Springs offers an unmatched quality of life that reflects the joys of small-town living in a safe, family-friendly community that residents and businesses are proud to call home. And again, there are five strategic priority areas, and let me go into those in just a little bit more detail on the next slide. The first one is related to economic development and diversity. And here, the outcome is Holly Springs provides a climate where a wide variety of businesses thrive with economic opportunity for all. And really, this particular component is focused around economic diversity, creating a vibrant downtown, and also seeking partnerships that drive our economic development. The second strategic priority area is engaged, healthy, and active community. In the statement here, Holly Springs promotes fulfilling and rewarding lifestyles with abundant, healthy living options. And this is focused on partnerships for recreation and cultural opportunities, ensuring that we're providing attractive places that people use and enjoy, and also developing events and programs that ensure that our programs appeal to activities for all residents. The third area is organizational excellence. And here, Holly Springs is a leader in responsible government with a high-performing organization that meets the public service needs of its residents. And in this particular strategic area, some important components are retaining and recruiting a highly skilled workforce, recruiting and retaining a highly skilled workforce, also enhancing our customer service components and improving business efficiencies, also expanding community engagement, our interaction and communication and discussion with our residents, and also ensuring financial stewardship of the taxes and fees that are entrusted to us to provide services in the community. The fourth area is responsible and balanced growth. And here, Holly Springs will continue to plan for future infrastructure and support a quality, balanced mix of land, mix of land uses while preserving its small-town charm, characteristics, and history. And in this area, we have outlined planning and maintaining and investing in infrastructure, supporting the land use planning and associated policies that help provide an environment for economic growth while also balancing small-town characteristics and qualities, also protecting our natural resources and preserving community, historical, and environmental assets. Also, a component of partnering with our regional neighbors on regional infrastructure investments. The final area, safe and friendly, Holly Springs is one of the safest communities in North Carolina with a welcoming spirit and inviting atmosphere. And obviously, the town enjoys a high level of public safety. We desire to continue that, or you have articulated that. Also, planning for adequate public infrastructure that ensures safety in our community. Also communicating public safety messages with our residents to make sure that they're informed about important emergency situations. Also, and finally, but certainly not least, creating a friendly atmosphere that's welcoming to all cultures and the diversity of our residents and visitors. So these are the goals that were outlined in your particular five areas. In your packet, you also have the 48 initiatives that go into more specific detail, and any of the residents can pull up this information in the, in the agenda packet online. I would, I do want to thank you and the great work that you have done. It's been a lot of, a lot of discussion, a lot of dialogue, great input. I also want to thank staff who've also, in that support role, helping you to get to this particular day at a place that, that you feel comfortable and proud of what you've pulled together. So what are the next steps? If we go to the next slide, please. So the, the first step will be, in the recommendation that you will hear from me on May 14th, that will include a reflection of these, these priorities. And then staff will also be working on additional action steps and organizing and creating various work plans within the organization to help with the action plan associated with carrying these out. And then finally, working to develop a set of performance measures that can help articulate what level of progress are we making on these particular strategic planning priorities? What impact are we having? Where can we make adjustments? And learning from that information so that we can manage going forward. So those are the next steps associated with the process, and we're real excited about the, this opportunity. And again, I want to thank you for the great work that you've done pulling this together.
And also just a reminder, we've all said the same thing, that as good as this is, it's very good, in case we need to change it later on, it's not in cement. Sometimes I think we all have a tendency to think, well, once we say it and do it and approve it, we can't do anything with it. Well, that's not true. So just want to remind everybody.
Yeah, no, that's a good comment. And, and the, the final bullet there in your, on your cover sheet does make that note that, at least on an annual basis, we want to make sure that we test and ensure that staff is in alignment with where your expectations are and your priorities are. And so we haven't determined exactly what that looks like in the future, but we do want to have that engagement with you to make sure we're still on the right track.
Questions or comments? Sure plan.
This is great. This was, I know when we, when we brought Randy on board last August, I think this was collectively one of the biggest goals we had for where we're heading as a town, you know? And to get to this point, it's, it's been a lot of work on, on our part, certainly Randy's office and, and all of his staff members and, and all the department heads that have participated in this. And at our workshop last week, it was just a fantastic session to have all the department heads that collectively had put input into this process in one room, owning it and supporting the plan. So I'm, I'm really excited for our future and I'm, I'm glad we're at this stage today to, to be able to accept this and, and now let's go out there and execute.
Yep.
Very exciting.
Think we're looking for a motion, motion at this point?
Screen.
That'd be great. There we go.
Motion to approve the 2019 strategic plan outlining the town's vision, priority areas, goals, and initiatives that are designed to meet the current service needs of the community and prepare for the future.
Second? Would you make a second all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Item 10B, new business, 18 MAS 01-A 01, Lowe's Commercial Master Plan Amendment, and we're looking at, not Sean.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, I am standing in for Sean Ryan tonight, who has done the heavy lifting on this item as the project manager for the Lowe's Wegmans' master plan and site plan or development plan. So do you want to recognize the, all the work that he did in working with both the applicant as well as the community over the, the life of this project? So tonight, the first request that we have before you is to amend the already-approved detailed master plan and have a requested action to approve or deny that detailed plan. As shown on the map, you can see the location is to the west of GB Alfred Highway, south of Ralph Stevens Road, north of the Wildwood Farm subdivision, and to the east of Wildwood Farm Way. The purpose of this amendment is simply to modify the color and materials palette. Once the users, both of the Lowe's and Wegmans, were known, their color palettes could be taken into account. So this would modify colors not needed by those two users, as well as adding a couple of colors to ensure that the color palettes of both of those buildings are available for use. So they will coordinate and be compatible and remove some extraneous materials and colors. No other changes to the master plan would be made, nothing to the actual master site plan, only to the, the color and material palette. So staff has reviewed this request. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to. We have Courtney Patterson available from Planning Board. If you'd like to hear on this, this is just the master plan item.
I think we're good.
Yeah.
I think we're good on this one?
The colors are good.
Yeah.
Anything else from Melissa?
With that, we can have a motion on this.
Motion to approve detailed master plan number 18-MAS-01-A 01 for Lowe's Commercial Master Plan submitted by Freeland and Kaufman Incorporated, dated revised January 17, 2019, with the following conditions: All previous conditions of approval for Lowe's detailed master plan shall apply to this amendment.
Second?
Would you make a second all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I think that's the only one. Am I correct? I think.
Thank you.
For that, yeah. For that.
Correct. So our next item is, is the actual development plan, 18-DP-15 for Lowe's Wegmans', and this is certainly the meat of the matter. This would be a request to approve a resolution for the waivers requested as well as for the development plan itself. Same property boundaries located adjacent to GB Alfred and Ralph Stevens Road. We have, as you can see in the process, as mentioned, we did have the master plan that was previously approved that set the basic boundaries for the property, establishing infrastructure and lots, layouts for utilities, general landscaping, so overall development project. Now what you're hearing before you this evening is the site-specific development plans that include the buildings, specific access points, particular parking layouts, really the details of all those features relevant to these particular users and buildings designs. So the site we have includes both a nearly 140,000-square-foot Lowe's Home Improvement located on the east portion of the site, as well as 9,900,000, excuse me, square-foot Wegmans that has been identified. As you can see, we've got the parking and loading counts provided. The site also does provide five internal pedestrian walkways. With this request, there are a couple of, several waivers. The first is to allow more than 75% of the parking in front of the building. This particular site is fronted on three sides with roadways, so the majority of the site is a front of the building. The only non-frontage would be adjacent to the Wildwood Farm neighborhood. The second waiver is to reduce the number of pedestrian walkways from six to five. This will be, can be described in more depth by the applicants, should you wish to hear that information. The lines in green illustrate the approximate locations of those walkways, essentially connecting from the far reaches of the parking lot on the north end, connecting them into the building so that visitors would have safe walkways to access the, the buildings. The site has been reviewed for compliance with a variety of development standards found in the UDO, including perimeter yards, landscaping, parking screening, parking islands. In terms of details, we have, it is in compliance with the aspects of the plan. It includes 50-foot perimeter yards along street frontages, as well as 25-feet buffers along residential properties. The applicant will also discuss some proposed changes to address some recent neighborhood concerns. As shown on the screen illustrating, you can see the buffer yards provided indicated as the type C-150, which would normally require a minimum of 75% of that landscape material to be evergreen trees. The applicant has chosen to go above and beyond that minimum requirement, providing 100% of the material as evergreen trees as opposed to shrubs or other material. So they are looking to increase the, the buffer function. In addition, as you can see, along the southwestern portion of the site, there is a fence as well as the plant material. That fence is in addition to all required plant material and is not in lieu of. One of the aspects of our UDO allows exchanging a fence for some of that landscape material. They have not done it in this case. They're providing all of the plant material and as well a fence in addition. The two elevations here are illustrative of the proposed development. These are the front sides of both buildings on the north side, which would be closest to Ralph Stevens Road. We've got the alternate compliance as well for architectural elements indicated for both Lowe's and Wegmans'. These are architectural features that they are requesting modifications from, typically common alternate compliances based on the size and structures of the buildings. And again, in this case, the applicant can provide more information if you'd wish to have further discussion on their reasoning for the requests. And with that, if you'd like Rachel from Engineering to give you some details.
Good evening. All right. So with this project, public utilities will be provided through connection with existing water main and gravity sewer. The water mains are located on Ralph Stevens Road and Wildwood Farm Way, and the existing gravity sewer is provided in the southern side of the property from the Wildwood subdivision. With the project, a downstream sewer study and pump station study was completed for the Holly Springs Basil Creek Pump Station and did include provisions for upgrades and improvements, quite significant improvements to the Holly Springs Basil Creek Pump Station. And the details of that construction will be included with the construction drawings submitted. A transportation or traffic impact analysis was completed with the project. All recommended improvements have been incorporated into the plans in front of you tonight. This is a summary from the TIA that highlights the multiple improvements that surfaced from the study, including existing laneages, any background improvements that are planned, and the improvements that the developer has committed to. So this highlights some of the, the major improvements. This is, again, just highlights, as you saw on the previous slide, there are multitude of improvements that aren't shown on, on this slide, but just to highlight some of the bigger items, there will be a super street constructed here on the bypass, some of the intersection improvements here at Ralph Stevens Road and Teal Lake Drive. There will also be northbound and southbound U-turns included with that. And that was requested and required by DOT and will be reviewed and approved by DOT and the town. In addition to that, with this development plan, 20 additional feet of roadway will be dedicated along the property frontage on the bypass to accommodate the future widening to the ultimate six-lane cross-section that's shown on our comprehensive transportation plan. On Ralph Stevens Road and Wildwood Farm Way, the applicant will, or has plans, and those detailed road improvement plans are shown in your packet tonight, to widen to half of the ultimate cross-section. On Wildwood Farm Way, there are additional turn lanes that are included as well across the property frontage. This red area here is just to symbolize the traffic signal that is proposed with the development. This will be approved with the full build-out of the pri- This will be approved with the full buildout of the project by DOT. There's a signal warrant analysis included in the TIA that the developer provided, so it will be at the discretion of the NC DOT. So this is just sort of what those items look like on the site plan and in the drawings that are included in your packet. Again, just highlighting those major improvements. It's worth mentioning that along Wildwood Farm Way, the 10-foot sidewalk will be included on the eastern side, project side of the site, and there'll be an additional five feet added to the Wildwood subdivision side of the site.
Any questions for Engineering at this time?
Questions?
Rachel, learning from experience, is there anything we can do to make that signal more of a certainty? Because we've learned this already from some of our, recently, from some of our other areas.
Sure.
If we know it's going to be busy and we're trying to figure out people turning, and there's also other development going right beside it, what can we do?
I will let the transit, or the traffic engineer, when they come up to speak, kind of hit that in a little more detail. There was a signal warrant analysis provided in the TIA that shows the warrants at full buildout. So I think with both the Wegmans and Lowe's development coming in now on a single development plan, we're more likely to see that signal triggered. Previously, the timing wasn't certain, so I could allow the applicant to speak to the timing of the development of both of these stores.
Okay.
Other comments or questions at this point?
Rachel, can you speak to the Greenway plan from the CTP? What does it call for today and the proposed Greenway that's on the site? How does that differ and why?
So the intent of the Greenway requirement here is ultimately a southern connection through the Adams property here to provide a more regional pedestrian connection and bicycle connection with our neighbors to the south. So I don't have the Greenway plan before me, but ultimately, this would connect to the Adams property and kind of run south and provide that connection. Also, then, this would continue here to the west and ultimately connect to Pine Grove Wilbon through the properties that are adjacent to Wildwood Farm Way, so that there is, so this southern connection to, let me back up a minute, would ultimately connect to Bass Lake as well. So there would be, as Susan mentioned earlier, there is that connection and pedestrian maneuverability across the bypass to Teal Lake Drive and ultimately to the Carl Dean Greenway to Bass Lake. So there would be two routes and provide more access for those southern properties and folks in that area.
Is it correct that the CTP today shows that route going to the south from the Ralph Stevens intersection, south that way?
Correct.
With this project, it was realigned to go through the property?
Correct. So I think that the applicant looked at trying to run the Greenway more parallel with the bypass, but some site constraints prohibited that. And I can let the advocate speak to the intent of the design a little more, but trying to get that connection from point A to point B and have that full connectivity, I think, is the intent behind this requirement for the specific site plan. And it's worth noting that to the south here, and it's not shown on this aerial, but there are two stubs, Kylene Drive and Misty Wood Hollow Circle, to the west of Wildwood Farm subdivision, that will ultimately connect to these properties to the west where the Greenway is planned to run over to Pine Grove Wilbon. And then Wildwood Farm Way, further south, there's a street stub there, too, that would connect to the Adams property. So there's a more regional, it's, it would serve a more regional need as far as Greenway connection is concerned.
Okay. I just have one more on a little moccasin way, the requirement for a gate to remain. What type of gate do we currently require for that if it's an egress road?
I don't know the specific material of the gate. I'm not sure if we have anyone here that would speak to that. I can follow up the fire department and ask what the requirement is today and what they would support as far as access and safety.
Okay.
Any other questions right now for her? Would you like to hear from the Planning Board, representative? Yes? I think so. It's a pretty big project, so I'd like to take it as far as we can go with it. Courtney, please come back.
I think we should have the applicant.
Oh, yeah, I got questions, yeah.
Yeah. We're not planning around 2:00.
Hi, I'm back.
Hi.
Did you have any specific questions or anything else that, I mean, we had a...
Just an overview, because the vote was 8-0-1, right?
Right, yeah. We had a pretty robust discussion on this as well, but the main thing, I mean, the two main things that really stuck out to me during our discussion was trying to get a, making sure that we got a commitment from Lowe's and Wegmans to continue to work with the community after, you know, the buildings were, as construction started, so that if issues came up. And the representatives of the community, who are all at the Planning Board as well, made it clear that Lowe's and Wegmans have been, you know, working with them to the extent that they can. And so there's relationships that have developed there, so that's good. And we just wanted to make sure that those relationships continued. And then also, the other big issue that we discussed was that the fence be moved closer to the building so that, you know, to do whatever we can to reduce noise. And I think that the speaker earlier, who went into depth over options to reduce noise, that those weren't discussed, all of those options weren't discussed at Planning Board because we didn't have the information from Wegmans, I think, at that time. But I think that the Planning Board overall supported efforts to decrease the noise in any way possible and certainly creating a berm and raising the fence to the extent that we can.
Anything else?
Did you guys discuss the Greenway at all? Was there any consensus on location or...
So the Greenway, I was trying to look back through my notes and the minutes, and we discussed it very briefly, but it was, it's my understanding that it actually, it couldn't, I think that the applicant discussed it more in detail, but that it couldn't be moved.
I believe the applicant can shed some light on that. They have, they've been looking at some alternatives as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Courtney? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Think we'd like to talk to the applicants next, perhaps? Unless you have something else.
If you have no other questions for me, be happy to bring the applicant up.
Applicant or applicants, please come forward and, again, identify yourself, name and address, for the record. Anybody else? See some familiar faces?
Not yours.
Good evening. We are glad to be back. I'll reintroduce myself and the team. I am Todd Simmons with Freeland and Kaufman, Civil Engineer. I have Travis Spicer with Lowe's, Art Beers with Wegmans. Not here today, Ronald Stevenson was our traffic engineering consultant. I'll be stepping in for him if there are traffic questions. And then we have Trent Farrell with Blue Ridge Architect, who is the Lowe's Project Architect. And Art will be able to answer any questions that you all might have on the Wegmans elevations. Kind of just run through quickly. I think we all know kind of what we're, what we're talking about, so I'm not going to deal much here, but the master plan was approved by this council back in October of 2018. I think Rachel talked about the TIA that was approved and all the iterations we went through to get to that point, and there are a significant number of improvements planned for this. Kind of the last note here, we note that there are significant off-site sewer improvements as well that I think Rachel alluded to, that I think basically Lowe's will be partnering with the town to do improvements to the, to the lift station that will really open up a lot more sewer capacity than is what's available now, which I think will benefit the town in the long run, so. To kind of just go back to the master plan approval and the conditions that were kind of placed on that, we worked with the neighbors on compatibility, and when we talked about that compatibility, the condition was talked about, about putting fencing along the southern property line as part of that master plan approval. So I think you noticed that, and it was talked about in a couple of the different presentations. I know Planning Board's recommendation was actually to move the fence to the top of the hill. You know, from our standpoint, I don't, I think we don't really have a stance one way or the other. I think we're happy, whatever council's view is, Planning Board, the neighbors, whatever they think would be the best location for them, is kind of where we would want the fence to go. I think from a screening and noise reduction issue as it relates to the uses of Wegmans and Lowe's, I think it makes sense for the fence to be up at the top of the hill. But again, we will defer the placement of the fence to others in that regard, so. And then I think the other, the other item we talked about was installation of the signal at Wildwood Farm and Ralph Stevens. We remain committed to putting that signal in as soon as somebody would say you can put it in. You know, currently, you know, I know from a, from a phasing standpoint, I know Lowe's is probably slightly ahead of Wegmans as it relates to when those two facilities open. We have run the analysis. The traffic signal is not warranted on just the Lowe's traffic. So I guess what we would ask, you know, from a, can we make sure it's there, would be, you know, and I think town may be committed to this in the master plan to try to maybe help us with DOT to let us go ahead and put it in now. We're ready to do that, but we can't make DOT let us do that, so. As soon as, you know, and I think it would be, it would benefit us to be able to go ahead and put it in. So if we can manage that, we would love for that to be, come to fruition, so. I think another comment we talked about during the master plan, the condition, was the buffer, kind of really more along where the Wegmans property is and how quickly could that buffer be planted and be installed. I think we committed to doing that as soon as possible. We're still committed to doing that. I think that might have been one of the reasons why the fence was thought to be maybe on the property line, because that would allow you to put the fence in during construction where you could kind of mitigate some of that construction impacts with the fence going in at that location, rather than waiting till all the grading's done and getting the fence on top of the slope and kind of more mitigation on the ultimate condition, so. I guess if, again, we, you know, we're open to either case there, so. And I think we also, you know, committed to relocation of, cost-sharing relocation of their kiosk and sign as it relates to Wildwood Farms back at the October hearing. I'll talk a little bit about the changes that we've had to the plan. So the plans that are in front of you, we've, we've continued to have conversations with, mainly staff, some conversations with the neighbors as well, as we've gone through this process from our final submission to planning commission and now to this day. So the plan before you all is the same one that planning commission saw. We did have discussions with staff, I think, last week about are there some things we can do to the Greenway to kind of address some of the neighbors' concerns? And so I will bring up this site plan and kind of talk you through some of the things, you know, we discussed with Parks and Rec and planning and engineering, and I'll kind of walk you through some of the changes that we did make. So at Parks and Rec's discretion or their direction, we did eliminate a small portion of the Greenway in this location, which allows, I guess, a buffer to stay here. As you work your way over, as you move on the Greenway and you start working up to the north, we've moved the buffer to the east and basically allowed the buffer to share the same space as the emergency access. And what that allows us to do is we had some plantings that were planned on this side of the Greenway that we've now moved to this side of the Greenway. And if we go, kind of, this was, kind of the impetus of this, I mean, you can see this is that existing buffer now. And what we think that will do will be allow us to kind of fill in the bottom parts. I think they've got pretty good screening up top, and we think that the plantings that we'll be able to provide will help provide a good buffer here. And it moves this section of the Greenway further away from this property line. As you continue to move along the Greenway, there were some concerns. I think our original crossing point was here in this curve, and what we did, again, working with staff, was look at moving the crossing up to this point, just to hopefully make that a safer crossing position and get it kind of away from, from this curve and that location, so. As far as the position of the Greenway, I think Mr. Berry alluded to, the Greenway, I think originally in the plan was maybe slated for this area. When we started looking back at this, when we started looking at this site, probably spring of last year, you know, we met with staff and we kind of talked through those options and really landed on this routing as an acceptable routing. You know, I think this has some environmental challenges. You know, you've got wetlands, you've got stream, you've got buffers, you've got a lot of things going on, and then you've also got an access from 55 that I think in any case where this site develops, you would have to have this, this access to such a large commercial project. So that kind of led us away from a potential pedestrian car interaction in this location and kind of felt like moving them over here into, you know, our traffic will be coming and turning off here, shouldn't be coming back here, so you should lessen that interaction back at this location. Try to address some of the things as we, as we move along. I do know, we did talk, you know, there was a lot of talk about the fence, you know, this is the location of the current fence, you know, we're now proposing to move it up to the top. I know there was some talk about a 15-foot-high fence. My understanding that a 15-high would not be allowed. I think we show eight feet up to this point right here where it then goes down to six, and I think that was our interpretation of what the code allowed. Melissa may be able to correct me. I think Sean noted that maybe this could go to 10.
Correct.
And I think, I think we would be willing to go to 10 on this section. I guess it's still, the 10 would have to stop here at this line. But, you know, I think we would still propose that to be the wood fence material. Obviously, I think it was noted, you know, we've done a lot of things with that buffer. You know, we've planted larger trees than are required to be planted. We have, there is a significant kind of slope plan, and I know there was some discussion about a slope. So this is section CC that's kind of cut through in this location, and then you can kind of see that depicted in cross-section on this view. So this would be the neighborhood here. You know, we've got plantings, we've got Greenway, we've got plantings here coming up the slope. This slope probably being about 10 or 12 feet in this location. Then you would have another 10-foot-high fence line and then over to the Wegmans building. So you can see from the property line over to the Wegmans building, you are talking about an order of, what is that, 150 feet or so? We believe that, you know, that, that provides really good buffering. It will, you know, continue as it grows. It will continue to provide buffering there, and the fence being at the top of the hill, like I said, would, would do a better job of that. We have, as Melissa indicated, not subtracted out plantings that we could have subtracted out for the fence, so we are planting all these. And in addition, we are making sure they're all evergreen. Instead of, I think they're only required to be 75% evergreen, we're making them all evergreen. So I think we have, have tried to mitigate that visual impact, noise impact, as best we can. And I think as, as we move around, you can see that we do have a substantial amount of plantings. And, and I think that this was envisioned, I guess, during the zoning process, and it's probably not very well depicted, but I think this line right here represents, really, there's a 30-foot strip that the HOA owns as a bit of a buffer between the commercial and the residential. So, you know, the residential, the actual residence yards end here, then there's a 30-foot buffer of HOA-owned property, then you get to our property line. So I think planning and zoning, knowing that this was commercial when it was coming in, I think did a good job of kind of knowing that we probably should leave a 30-foot buffer here. here on the residential side, which was left, and then obviously we've provided the, the required buffer and kind of exceeded that buffer on our side. We did, we are requesting a couple of waivers for the site, I think Melissa alluded to the 75% waiver, obviously that's really mostly a function of being fronts on three sides. So we've, we've requested that, and then we've also gone from the ordinance required, six pedestrian walkways, down to five. Really, the impetus of that was mostly, I think you all recall from the master plan hearing, that we basically agreed to widen Wildwood Farm Way, an additional lane all the way down from Ralph Stevens down to our first entrance, so from a TIA standpoint, we agreed to widen Wildwood Farm Way to three lanes all the way down to this access point, which was not a requirement of the TIA. The TIA basically said that could have remained two lanes. And then we also added a fourth lane, so we actually did four lanes from here to here, and then we did a full three lanes all the way back. That kind of was eating into the usable area because obviously when you dedicate right away and you add laneage, then your setback moves with that, so I think Stephanie with the neighbors noted their approval of that concept as well, and we appreciate that as a, as a compromise that we feel was, was a good working relationship between, between us and the neighbors as it related to that, so. With that, I'll probably stop on the site plan portion, ask if you have any questions related to that, and I'll probably turn it over to Travis and maybe answer any operational type of questions you guys might have, go from there.
Questions at this point, or comments?
Just one on the greenway buffer, you had showed some wax myrtles on the farther south point, am I understanding correctly that you'll have part of the buffer on that side of the greenway and then the, the larger deciduous trees, all evergreens on the other side of the greenway? Is there any buffer between the residences and the greenway?
Yeah, so, so in this plan and what, kind of went, after we talked to staff last week, so what we're now proposing would be, all the plantings would be between the residents and the greenway in this location.
Right, I got that, sorry, over, keep going up to the left?
Over here.
Over there, when the path goes that way, where is, is there, there's buffer there where your cursor is, and then that other black line, is the greenway in between that or are those plantings there?
There is, there's one, one row of plantings, I think it's a five, six-foot strip between the greenway and the property line.
Okay.
Which is reflected on, so you can kind of see it here.
Right.
That would be the road there, where you'd probably just get the one row there.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions or comments?
So in terms of the fencing along there, the 10-foot, right, that we potentially could do, the concerns of the residents there was, you know, having a fence of 15 feet high, what's the grade that you, you think potential would be if you were to put that fence closer to your property line where before it was, it was further down? Are we talking five, 10 feet?
Yeah, so I, I think this, this probably illustrates it pretty well, and it's a little bit hard to see, I'm sure, so if you look at it, the grade at the property line is around 430. The Lowe's building in this section would be as we cut through here. And so the Lowe's building is at 444, that's where the finished floor is, so this is probably in the 442 range, so you're talking about, you know, roughly 12 feet between the property line and where the curb line would be. And so then you'd have another 10 feet above that, so top of the fence to the property line would be roughly 22 feet.
22 feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Other questions? And or comments?
The, I guess it's more of a Wegmans question, where the, the fence goes down from the 10 feet, where the Market Cafe is looking towards the pool, any consideration there for some type of screening or is there any discussion on that?
We're not proposing it, I mean, I know we've, obviously, we've, we've got a, I mean, you've got a pretty significant bank here as well, so this, this will all be sloping up and be a pretty good grade difference. We're proposing these plantings in this area, you know, and typically we try to get them, I mean, they are buffer plantings, so you want to visually screen from the roadway, and that's really the purpose of those plantings. I think we're open to moving those plantings up a little on, further up on the hill to make sure we kind of alleviate or mitigate that concern, because I think if we were to move these plantings that are kind of down on the slope, if we move them up on the slope, that would help address that concern.
Yeah, I think is, you know, my own opinion is just as thick as we could go there, probably better. If it were me in the pool, I doubt any of your patrons would want to see me sunbathing over there, so. The thicker, the thicker the better over there, just to make sure there's adequate buffering and, you know, some sanity for the folks that are enjoying their amenity.
Yeah, and, and one thing we have done as part of our waiver request, we added additional landscaping up here. It may make more sense to maybe add that additional landscaping down here rather than up here as, I think maybe it might, more bang for our buck down here than up there.
I'd be, I'd like to see that.
I think so, yeah. Others? Questions or comments?
So the road, Rachel, for the emergency vehicle, it's temporary, correct?
That's correct. So when a secondary point of access is developed with the adjacent properties, Misty Wood Circle and, you know, Kylene Drive, or if Wildwood Farm Way, if those dubs connect to a, a development adjacent to the neighborhood, that would serve as a secondary form of access for the neighborhood, and that emergency access could be abandoned. So until that happens, the emergency access road has to remain available and open.
Okay. But eventually it will.
That's correct.
Okay. Any time frame?
Wish, I wish.
Wish I had the crystal ball. Sorry.
Anything else at this point?
Travis Spicer with Lowe's, I'm sure we're not done with the greenway and the fence and all this other stuff yet, but try to address some of the other concerns, I think lighting has been one that we've heard, so, I mean, the town has a certain lighting ordinance, but typically what we require is zero-foot candles at the property line, so, you know, I think their main concern is the, is the rear, typically that's done with wall packs, shield fixtures, so they're pretty much shielded down, we may have some poles, but I think the pole height's back here, based on town ordinance are relatively short, if I recall correctly. So again, cutoff shields, everything pretty much direct down. I think in planning, you know, in Planning Board, demable, demable controls was something that was mentioned, so the way we operate is, you know, hour after closing, we go down to a nightlight scenario, so essentially, we've just got security lighting on at, at that point. So it wouldn't be every fixture, it may be every third fixture, it could be every fourth fixture, you know, the parking lot may, you know, it's just going to be sporadic, and that's for security purposes only. So again, we typically go full light hour before operation, we're down to a nightlight hour after operation. I think some of the other stuff that we've heard has been, you know, the trash compactor, so just, so everybody knows, I mean, and I think you can see it on our elevations, our trash, trash compactor is here, but it's also screened with a screen wall here. That's a closed structure, everything's fed from inside the building, all dry goods, it's not an open top, it's not open to the weather, it's not, you know, something that the trucks come in and, you know, you see the arms and they bang and dump, so essentially it's, it's full, we got a, you know, we work with Waste Management Republic, they, they come in, they pull it out, they haul it off, they bring a clean one in. Another thing that was mentioned a little earlier was loading spaces right here, so I want to make sure that I address this a little bit, so this is not loading spaces for, say, two-part, two-part trucks back here idling, so we typically try to utilize this, we have a pretty extensive recycling program, so we try to recycle appliances and we try to recycle pallets and everything else. Part of that is too, we don't want them just junking the back of the store up, so typically they're loaded in there when it's full, we work with a vendor to come off, pull that out, and put, put a clean one down. So we're just essentially trying to keep everything in the back of the building clean, again, that's part of our recycling program. Trucks back here, just so you know, this is our truck well, this does go down in grades, so, you know, you're at grade here, and then you go down, sort of down in a hole, so, you know, this is a wall here, a wall here, you're down. Again, you know, I'll just hit truck deliveries for Lowe's, I mean, typically, high-volume store, 10 trucks per day, and that can vary if it's, you know, if it's, it could be a little, little bit more, a little bit less, but our typical receiving hours, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We do have building materials that come in, you know, one or two trucks a week, that's maybe a little bit earlier than that. The one, well, I'm gonna say positive for what I will call a positive, but that's over here, so typically all that activity's over here, which is about as far away from the residents as you can get, as far as our stuff goes. So the earliest delivery would be handled over here as opposed to right here. So I, I'm trying to think if there was any other major concerns that I'm missing right out of the top of my, off the top of my head, so anything specific to Lowe's that you can think of?
When are the trucks coming in and out, is that daytime or is that?
7:00 AM to 4:00 PM is what we, that's our receiving hours. Now, I'll tell you, just like I told Planning Board, I can't control truck drivers, I mean, we've done stuff, you know, we can put no idling signs up, let's just say that one comes in at night, our preference is not to have them back here, we don't want them parked back here, you know, so again, we can, we can try to deter it if it becomes a problem, but again, typically our trucks should be coming in here, coming around, you know, again, doing everything here and going back out and then come up and make the U-turn, but again, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM is our typical receiving hours for Lowe's.
So they're turning around in the back and then coming back out?
Yes, that's, that's our plan.
How many trucks do you anticipate in a week or?
So it's 10 per day, so.
10 per day?
Yeah, on a high-volume store, so I, I hope this is a high-volume store, if everybody shops there, we'll be in good shape, but I mean, it could be eight trucks a day, but 10 average, high volume.
Do you allow overnight parking for trucks?
We, I mean, again, we got everything on the back of the building signed as far as receiving hours, we can do signage, you know, for no overnight parking, I mean, and try to deter trucks if that's the case. We've done no idling signs on other projects, so we can add some signage, whether it be, you know, on the back of the building or the side of the building, or, you know, if this is the, if this is the traffic, you know, if there's some poles here, whatever, sign lighting poles, I mean, we can put a placard or something on that, so we've done that at other stores to try to deter that, but no, I mean, we don't just say come in and park here behind the store overnight, that's not what we do.
You told us a couple of meetings ago how many stores you had done in your career?
Oh, Lord.
Give me a reminder.
Several, probably I'd say several hundred, a couple hundred, 250, 300 in my 17 years. When I came on, we were building 150 a year, 155 a year, so a bunch.
Just curious.
So you've heard these comments before?
It's not my, not my first time hearing these comments.
Not your first rodeo, right?
No, that's. And again, to Todd's point, I mean, we did try to work with staff, listen to the residents, you know, we have shifted this greenway over, moved these buffer plantings here, I think what y'all are talking about here, moving this back down in here, that's fine, I don't see a problem with that. One other thing that was mentioned was the gate, and I think one of you had a question about the gate, so as far as the access, what I had envisioned was swing gate with an aux box, but I mean, if it needs to be a different gate, it can be a different gate, but again, you know, originally I think we were proposing it maybe down here, but we can, we, I think right now we're thinking put it up here behind the curb, so I don't think we have a preference as to where that gate goes for the emergency access.
And what were your operating hours?
We're typically six to 10 summer months, Sundays were usually, it varies by market, so we were usually closed by six on Sundays. Wintertime, we typically shorten that, it may be eight to eight, it just depends on the markets and, and how the store's doing. But typical, we'll say on average, six to 10, and usually at six is your contractors that are in there early in the morning, usually their bulk of our traffic's right here for, for contractor sales, they're looking to do, you know, resident, or whatever they're doing that day, or, you know, a lot of times they'll load up the night before.
So they're in the front picking up all their materials?
Yes, sir.
They're not coming in at all in the back to?
Yeah, so, I mean, when we open, yeah, it's open to the public, so it's, it's, you know, patrons are up here coming in, in and out, and closing at 10, in and out up here.
Other questions or comments?
When it's like garden season, like you'll see at other stores, and they put fences up and don't have traffic, do you do the same thing here, like a garden, like pick up your mulch, drive through here?
So, sure, that's a, well, we do a lot of things when it comes to the garden center. A lot of times in the spring sales, you know, we may do a car corral, like a fenced-in area where you can, you can buy and come in here and pick up, but, you know, typically, we got it, right now I think we got all, the only outdoor sales and, and display that we've got shown is along the front sidewalk. I think per ordinance, so this right here is pine and wheat straw trailer enclosure, so if you like to buy pine needles, this is where you would pick those up, and again, we got the loading zone here that you can park in, so back to if you had mulch or whatever, I mean, you could, you could park here, we could do a quick load and get you out, if that's what you're asking.
I was just trying to see with the flow, because we're looking at changing some of the pedestrian ways where that would be.
Correct, so really right in here is where the bulk of that would take place, here's the entrance into the garden center.
Okay.
And then the crosswalk's right there, pretty much at the entrance to the garden center.
Okay. Good?
Good. Okay, I'll turn it over to Trent real quick, who'll talk about waivers, and then we'll let Art talk to you about Wegmans.
Trent Farrell, Blue Ridge Architecture from Knoxville, Tennessee. We have worked with Sean using the UDO, and Sean's been, I'll repeat some, y'all are not paying him enough for what he does. But we worked to make the, the Lowe's fit into the UDO, or our interpretation of it. We have only requested two small waivers, one was for the glass because in a big box it's hard to get glass to fit in, and we are trying to mimic the look of windows with different materials throughout the building to meet the requirement. We also are looking at some waivers on the 30-foot rule, we had a couple areas because of some of the widths and everything of our entries in, at the garden center, where we were slightly above the 30 feet, I think our largest one was 43, 44 feet, eight, but we have a large amount of variance in and out on the front of the building, differences, different materials, using as you saw from what was approved just a little bit earlier. We are going to work very closely with Wegmans to get a, Wegmans does have a brick that they use nationally, we're going to try to make sure that we match that as closely as we And any questions on the elevations, how you go back?
Say no. Good, thank you.
Give it to Art now.
Yes, I'll speak. The anchorman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, pleased to meet all of you, pleased to be in the town for a presentation of our project, and I'll mimic the words of appreciation for your staff all along the way. I've been in many states, many board meetings, and I have to say, and I'm not saying this other than right from the heart, you have a class act, very professional, very knowledgeable staff, so that doesn't mean that there's not challenges along the way from the applicant's point of view, but here again, they were very clear on defining what the codes were, how the waiver process worked, and once again, it was well, very well received. As we've been received, at least initially with the planning and the Planning Board hearing, as well as now before this board, we look very much to being part of this community, we know that there's approvals to be gone. we know that there's approvals to be gotten, permits to have, and there's no guarantees. With that said, and if I might, I'm gonna try to give a very brief overview of who we are, and then I'll get into the site plan, and then certainly address any questions, comments, concerns that you might have. As you can see on the board, in 2016, I love this because it says a lot in one page, first of all, in 2016, it was our 100th anniversary, we beat the Ford Motor Company by two years, I believe, I think in 2018 was their 100th anniversary, so we've been around longer than they have, and what that leads to the point is, we're third, fourth generations that had the company, so in the middle, you have Danny Wegman and the two daughters, Colleen on the right, the blonde and the brunette on the left, that is Nicole, excuse me, Colleen on the right and Nicole on the left, president and vice president, third, fourth generations again, Danny's father, Bob Wegman, he became president in 1950, had joined a little after his, actually, his grandfather, that being Danny's once again, Walter and John Wegman, here again, they would be Mr. Wegman or Bob Wegman, his father and uncle started the business after working the grocery business from their parents. In 2016, they started the fruit, Rochester Fruit and Vegetable Company, a couple years later, Mr. Wegman, Bob Wegman, joined it, and once again, 1950, became president, and unfortunately, passed away in 2006. The key point here is multi-generational, privately-held company allows us the flexibility to advance the company, change with the times, and yet serve the community, serve the customers, and serve the employees, which is one of the foundations of Mr. Wegman. Not only did he say, when he became president in 1950, that he wanted to be, build the best supermarket in the nation, he wanted to have the best service to his employees first, and then the customers, and then everything falls from there. And here again, off to the left of the cart, the push cart, here again, Mr. Wegman's uncle and father, they started off as produce, push cart peddlers, here again, 200 or 200 years from now. As far as our stores, we don't have thousands of them, we're a very slow, controlled growth company, we have 98 right now, and in April here in Virginia Beach, we'll have our 99th, and in Raleigh, we'll have our 100th store coming up in the September of this year, and we're glad to be here again in the Carolinas. With that, we have seven states, and we're largest private, one of the largest private companies in the United States, as I mentioned, 48,000, and this is just one little recognition as far as numerics here, 31st on the 2017 supermarket news list of top 75 supermarkets in the nation based on sales, and it gets even better on that, so this is where I talked here again about the founding fathers, and where we developed over the years from the Rochester Fruit and Vegetable Company. Distinctions and awards, it goes on and on and on, but the key point that sums it up in the upper right-hand corner, 22 years on the list of Fortune magazines, 100 best companies to work for in 2019, and with that rolls into the Harris-Ball reputation quotient, and then actually, we're number one in 2019. What that was is, in a very succinct presentation, it's a listing of the 100 most visible companies in the United States, and it was right on their basically character, their trustworthiness, their vision, and then their business strategy, and number one in 2019, it speaks for itself, and all the other accolades that come along from various industry and business magazines. Here again, we raise the bar on the shopping experience, the best quality is our key point, restaurant quality, prepared foods, the beautiful stores, we'll show a picture or two later on, and then the number of people, we have 5,300 people contacted Wegmans, asking for us to come into the community, and 8,000 wrote how much they like to shop at Wegmans and appreciate it, and how the employees treat it, and that gets to the point of, and I apologize, we can't get it right with our PowerPoint, it looks good on all of our screens, and every time we came, come here, just like at the Planning Board, they jumps around. So long and short of it, here again, we promote from within, career growth within the company. I've been there 30 years, I came from an architectural engineering firm, figured I'd be there for one year as a transition, here I am 30 years later, I'm not unique, we have second, third, fourth generation people, in fact, I was in an event the other day, we had at least, almost, probably a dozen people, 50 years in the business at the store, 40 again, and it goes on and on and on. We have a commitment to employment of our people, everybody, those with special needs, those that don't, across the board, young, old, and in between, healthcare benefits, full-time and part-time employees who work 30 hours a week, full employment, our split is basically 3/4, full-time, 1/4, part-time, typical store of this size, this market, maybe employ 450, 500 people, and on one shift, we can have as much as 200 people on a shift. Here again, and that speaks to the product, the services that we provide in the business, how solid it is. We match with 401K plan, we have a employee scholarship programs, we have defined contribution retirement plan, all funded by Wegmans, and that started by Mr. Wegman years ago. At the bottom, we've awarded $115 million in tuition assistance to more than 36,000 employees. Last year, as far as employee growth and development, $50 million, and $5 million in scholarships just last year alone. Offerings of what we have, although we look a very elegant store, very detailed, very colorful, very market-like, all intended, we have consistently low prices, we partnership with a lot of local farms, right now, more than 400, and we hope to do that with, once again, local vendors, local farmers in the community, so when you come into your community, local products, and then worldwide product, we shop around the world, unique shopping experience, we have the European market look, we bring that to the outside of our building look, and here again, working with staff, I think we made a great ultimate design on that. Here again, just quick pictures, if you go online, Wegmans.com, get any of our stores, you'll have a lot of these pictures showing the inside of our stores, this is, this one here in the lower left is from a mezzanine, we have him in some stores, looking down, and you can see here again, a plethora of sushi bars, bakery, seafood, et cetera, and obviously, our produce is our showcase, going back to, excuse me, our foundings in 1916, Mr. Wegman, and all of our stores today, as you walk in the front door, that is who we are, the produce department, and we showcase that the minute you walk into the door, a couple other patisseries, bakery, and it goes on, this is one of the inside cafe seating and our patisserie. Ever exploring, ever developing, here again, based on customer comment, as well as to keep ahead of the game as far as what we can provide to the community. Speaking of community, we do make a difference, we have a deep relationship with all of the communities we're involved in, we've donated in the past up to 14 tons of food to various food banks, as well as each store has its own discretionary funds to work with local community, such as the children, seniors, and the needy in between. We typically, what we do, once a store has approved, up and running as far as the construction, well ahead, maybe up to a year in advance, our team of folks in community relations, come down and meet with your school superintendent, United Way, different representatives of your organizations to see how we can partner, how we can give back to the community, that's day one, once again, one year out from our store opening. Here again, priorities at the very bottom, feeding the hungry, helping young people succeed, and encouraging healthy eating and activity, enriching store neighborhoods, and supporting local United Way. Here again, some of the typicals, these are actual pictures, these are not renderings of various types of our stores, I think what we have now is more in line with what you have here at the bottom right-hand corner, and with the clock steeple also. As far as waivers, Nick Missile, our architect, came before the Planning Board, he had a lot of detailed discussion and presentation, if I can simply say that, working with staff, again, I think that it's been shown that with some changes that we've accommodated with materials and looks such as the clock tower, with the enhanced architectural treatments, the modulations, the human elements, we meet the intent and spirit of the UDO. As Trent had made mention, with consideration of the building, of the scale, that it's a challenge at times to meet letter of the law, as far as the detail, when you have a code, and typical of all municipalities, it applies to all buildings, so then when you have buildings of different scales, but we think with, here again, with all the enhanced architectural treatments, the modulations, the human elements, that we've all met that for a great-looking store. With that, and transparency, we've met that, IFIS, we work with that. So with that said, I'll be glad to address any questions or comments.
Did you mention Virginia Beach?
Yes.
Store you're doing?
That's coming in April of this year, it's opening?
Reason I ask, my kids are waiting.
Oh.
In Virginia Beach.
Good, that's great to hear, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
When do you expect that the store open?
It all depends on approvals permitting process, we never set schedules until we get through it, we don't want to be presumptuous, so we don't have a schedule.
Can you talk a little bit about your hours and truck deliveries?
Yes, so Ms. Morgan, we have conversations with her, we heard at the Planning Board, and we spoke on the phone. As far as the deliveries, we typically have one to three overnight, you know, with seven days, here again, it could be one on a particular night, two nights, three nights, or it could be as much as three, it's not three every single night. Hearing the comments, working with the neighbors and staff, hearing the comments, I've had spoken to the distribution, and it's just been recently of a day or so, that have actually, they've said that although it's challenging, they're willing to restrict overnights as best we can. As far as distribution center, I know the statement was made, there's no distribution center, we do have a distribution center, actually, we have two, one up in Rochester, New York, and a second in the southern part of Pennsylvania, the point is, we don't have a distribution center locally, but that aside, regardless, we would have the same number of deliveries regardless, it doesn't matter if the distribution center is up in Rochester, Pennsylvania, or here, the deliveries are the same, it's not incremental. A couple other things, as far as the back of the building, we heard the concerns and comment about the Wegman sign on the back, certainly, and that can go away, it's on the record. As far as mitigation of noise, I think you've heard a lot from Travis and Todd, a lot of the things with a 12-foot differential, we're up here 444, 430 down here, and then everything in between, I think you heard a 12-foot differential with grade, and then a 10-foot, that's 22, so if you take our finished grade up here, and I'll say that 430 level down here, and then you build that all up, here again with the fence, the sightline from where we are with the tractor-trailers, our emergency generators, our compactors, you know, that sightline would go up, it would not go down because you have that there, if you connect the points of where those units are at the back of the store and had, sorry about that, oh, here, I guess that is good. So if you're back here and heading in this direction towards the neighbors, it's actually a sight coming up because everything is dropping, so that's a good thing versus the other flip on it, so that's, that'll help mitigate along with the evergreens and the fencing. In addition, our emergency generator, which is right back here, is just that, we've had experiences with Massachusetts as one example, where the entire community was shut down, and we became the central control for the entire police, fire department, and EMTs, because we had our generator up and running, and we were provided to have store operations, not only for food, to keep that stable so people can come and get their food, not only a safety refuge, but also a command center with phone systems. So that's why we have that, that's there only as an emergency situation with a lot of benefits to obviously us, to protect the product, but also for the community, here again, if need be a control center, and number two, to provide an opportunity for people to buy, whether it be pharmacy, whether it be food, or whether it be emergency elements during that period, and the likelihood, if we're gonna be down, there's a bigger issue, there's probably your power grid down, there's a voltage drop, or there's a major storm here again, like in Massachusetts, so yes, there would be an emergency going on here, generator, but with that said, it's an emergency, it's not like it's running every day. What we do do is test it once a week during the day, literally turn on the switch, it's not at capacity, and then once a month for an hour, run it at full capacity during the daytime. As far as sound generation, this, the generator itself is housed, it's hospital-grade unit, it's actually housed in a metal, I'll say, structure, so that mitigates it, number one. Number two, it's hospital-grade. Number three, at a store I have found just before I came down here, a store that we had one, and we took readings, and we were at the 115-foot distance away from the generator, I believe the decibel reading was 63.5, all right, so that, so that would be at the 115, and I think I heard, and I believe from this, from this point to the property, let's say from the store to the property line, I think I heard is 150 feet. Pardon? Well, 100, 100, so say 100, I thought it was a little different, but putting that aside, that's on a straight line, unobstructed view, here again, as far as nothing mitigating the sound. We have trees, we have fencing to mitigate that, here again, and it's an emergency generator. As far as our refrigeration units on our tractor-trailers, those are going, and at a 65-foot distance away from those units, so if you take this point here and come 65 feet over, you're somewhere in here, that, in this point in here roughly, you're gonna be at the 60 or 66 decibel level, and that's up at this point with our reefer units going on, and here again, we're well distant from the properties, and certainly, that's line of sight, that's without consideration of all the mitigation measures already offered up. Now, with that said, our tractor-trailers come in, they turn off the engine of the truck, it's shut down, they come in, the refrigeration units, when they're there, they're just there as they unload, half hour, 45 minutes at max, then they get up and everybody leaves. We do not have parking at the back of our overnight parking or anything of that sort at the back of our building, so that addresses, I think, the deliveries, I jumped into the sign and I talked about the noise.
Art, can you talk about the path, the trucks you see coming in?
We don't have that defined, but to, it could either be two paths, here again, I'm presuming it's gonna come down 55 rough stevens, come down here, the possibility, I believe the radiator designed as such, they can come in here, up here, back, and then potentially leave at this direction, or there's, we don't know, but I think we possibly can actually turn around and come back here, I have to run that template, that's one option, the other option is come here, over here, and back in, and then out this way. We don't have a defined route, but here again, we are very much, do our best to manage, certainly Wegmans tractor-trailers we do, but vendors, as Travis had made mention, we do the best we can, which is pretty darn good. As shared with Ms. Morgan, we have a number, I think it was at least 12, if not more, stores where our docks basically back up to residential, roughly in the same proximity, we have been there a long time, we continue to work with neighbors even after the stores open, as made mention during the Planning Board meeting, they will have the number of the front desk and store manager, but we say front desk because that's the central command there, and we do respond to customers' concerns if somehow we're out of line with the understanding.
Art, what's your hours of operations?
We are, it depends which store, we have 24-hour stores, and we have six to midnight, that is our business model.
6:00 a.m. to midnight?
6:00 a.m. to midnight, those are the two business models.
Does that include the Market Cafe, where people sitting outside till midnight?
Quite frankly, it's interesting, the Discussion Cafe, it's not a high entertainment area, it's literally tables and chairs, people that want to come into that cafe, get a, get a little sub sandwich or a soup or a pizza and come out here and sit, and that's it, and then they come and go, people don't linger for hours, there's no music out here, we have occasions where we, if we do it, we ask and get permit from the communities if it's permitted, but I can't see that, and then I think to the point, and I could be way off on this, but I tried to get a sense of where the pool was on an aerial map, and I could be wrong because it's Google and all this, but I think it's hundreds of feet away, and then we add it on the differential again with the elevations, we're up here, they're down there, and then add it on to the trees, the masses of trees, not just one area, but you have the slope, and then you have additional here, and if we mitigate it with more trees, I find that it'd be very difficult, that this would be seen in either directions, either we'd see the pool, or the pool would see the cafe, but I think that's something, maybe in a cross-section, we can actually show that at some point, but I'm pretty confident, here again, with the hundreds of feet, I scaled, and I could be wrong, and I apologize if I did, because it was just a, you know, a quick, you know, sketch sort of thing, 700, 800 feet away, and here again, with the differential, and then the mitigation with the evergreens, I'd be surprised, you certainly won't hear, I'd be surprised if we heard any noise, and here again, it's not high activity, it's to sit on a table, have a little bite to eat, and then go on your way.
Other questions or comments? Other questions or comments?
We good?
I think we're good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Keep on Virginia Beach now. Anything else, anyone? All good? Thank you very much. Come on back. I hate to start that.
Before we move forward, is there a chance to talk a little bit about the greenway? Is somebody talking about that?
Yeah, I'd like to know better the reason why, I mean, I understand why we can't locate it in the originally planned area, but why are we moving it to its proposed location versus utilizing the sidewalks for all of it or part of it within the neighborhood, which seems to be adjacent?
Sure. So the discussion on the greenway did occur with our Parks and Recreation Department. So the applicant has been coordinating with both Adam and Leanne throughout the process to determine the most appropriate location. There is a specific greenway included in the plan, or included on our CTP in addition to the general sidewalk network. So I, I believe that the intent was to ensure that that was, as Rachel alluded to, still providing those additional connections in addition to a pure sidewalk. We know that sidewalks are sometimes utilized, wide sidewalks for greenways. There will be a portion here with a wider sidewalk, but as we know, folks also enjoy being on paths that are not, not a pure pedestrian sidewalk. So I, this was part of a, kind of a iteration. So if you'd like to hear if there's any, I don't know if there's any more that Adam may be able to provide in terms of what discussion was, but these were iterations throughout the process to try to determine the best location and meet the needs and intent of the, the greenway plan.
I think the appearance of, will it go anywhere, or how does it fit into the master plan, is valid.
Sure.
How long would it take before it's actually connecting more things versus it just sitting there?
And as we know, a lot of that does determine, is dependent on development of adjacent parcels. But certainly if we don't ask for it now, we would not be having the developer provide those improvements. So that becomes one of the challenges is if we, if we believe we would like this feature in the future, having it installed by the developer, of course, provides this amenity without the town having to go back and retrofit and, and put in that, the money and the effort to, to go back and do that.
Was there discussion to have more of a buffer in the greenway that's behind the Wegmans, much like it was near Lowe's? Because it seems like it's like one tree and then the path versus shifting it and having four or five trees in the path.
So I think in general, the discussions and, and what you might be seeing is the result of a balancing act of different needs between the greenway, the elevation changes, and the best location for placement of all of these factors. We heard, there were some concerns heard that folks would want more buffering from a greenway with a fence on the bottom of the hill. Other folks may want a fence at the top of the hill for buffering from sound. The location of plant material is, also comes into play. So what you're seeing here in terms of placement of plant material, greenway location, we're trying to balance all of those needs. And so as you saw, there was a slope change. The location of the greenway, I believe, was intended to try to keep it on a relatively flat plain. So in, just in looking at the topography of the proposed grading of the site, so I think that may come into, to play on part of the reason why it's located there as opposed to having someone have it go on an incline. Again, this is, this is the result of trying to take all of those factors into account and, and balance to come up with a, a good result for everyone.
Many of our developments, the green, we require greenways that aren't going anywhere. We just did, Parks and Rec just did a tour of some of them through neighborhoods last week, and the future connection is dependent on, on the development.
Yeah, a lot of those greenways end up using sidewalks in the neighborhood, connecting from one to the other. This one seems to want to force a greenway where one was not intended in lieu of using the sidewalk. They essentially run parallel. So I'm still a little uncertain as to the value of that part of the greenway and the impact it is causing, especially given it's kind of wedged between residential and, and commercial. I don't know if, if Adam can speak to that, or somebody can give, give me a better understanding of why this is necessary.
I think we have a volunteer coming.
And it's hard, I still am learning about greenways. Why, I mean, because I don't know that sidewalks, they fill in in parts for greenways, but aren't supposed to be because you have people on bikes that want greenways. So Adam, if you could also, you know.
Let me find a map of the greenway here. Hold on one second. Sorry, let's go back here. So we do have a proposed greenway on, as Figure 4.2B of our transportation plan. We originally had a greenway that was going all the way down here. It borders the eastern property of Wildwood Farm Way. It goes up to this point here, but as Todd alluded to, when we first looked at this greenway, because of topography, low-lying areas, because there's a big retaining wall here, and the safety of coming across this road, we felt like this was not a good way to connect it. Now, we have possibilities coming from the east. We have Peak Hang Grove South, or two, might connect Peak Hang Grove One over to the Carl Dean Greenway. So one of the reasons we want to get this connectivity is once that's developed, Adam's roads developed, there's a connectivity point that we could get from Adam's property. If we don't get this now, then we may never get it. We could, we did discuss going up through a neighborhood, which we've done in the past, but we've had surveys that we just did where they said greenways were the most important amenity that Parks and Rec could get. If you look at Ms.'s master plan, if you look at some of the old Beyond the Green master plan, it said that everyone was dissatisfied with our current greenway system, which basically entails that we're not doing greenways. We've been doing sidewalks. We maybe connect a few points here and there, but we've not been happy, or the group has not been happy with our greenway plans. So since I've taken it over a year and a half ago of reviewing these plans, I've been very vigilant on bringing greenways in where we could. And since it was proposed on this property based on Figure 4.2B of our transportation plan, we wanted to have some connectivity. And that's what we did. We felt like going through the southern part of the property and coming westbound, it would provide the safest means for people coming from the east and going to the west.
So Adam, let's say, and, and I hear you, that we want the greenways. I can, but it's in the back of these people's yards between their backyards and a wall with commercial. So that's weighing pros and cons of that.
I would want to note that there is a buffer, there is an existing buffer on the Wildwood Farm side of the property so that the individual residence property lines do not directly abut the commercial property line.
Right, there is a, but it's, it's pretty flat. It's, it's pretty flat. So if, what if we went back to the Plan A for the greenway? Because it's a better, it's, it's a better view. You're not between somebody's backyard and a commercial building. And say, we just do a better crosswalk.
Right here.
Because, you know, we have greenways crossing roads and other places too. I mean, is that, could we even go back to that plan and take the risk of having the crosswalk there versus having this in the back of these people's properties?
Obviously, Town Council can decide whatever you feel is best. We decided against this because we felt like people coming on, going down, you know, south of 55, coming 55 miles an hour, turning this corner, that it could possibly be dangerous for people. I mean, you got a crosswalk with someone coming off an interstate, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to propose a greenway that's going to cause issues. And we felt like that area is going to be very busy. We felt like keeping them to the south and on the south side of the property, getting them across and getting up to Ralph Stevens Road would be the safest measure and more peaceful, if you will, maybe not for the residents, I can realize that. But getting them there would be the most safest route for pedestrians versus going across here. We do have some connectivity that we have from Ralph Stevens Road, and that's what we're trying to connect to going on east and west there. We have obviously the apartment complex up on Ralph Stevens, coming south from Morgan Park all the way down. So we want to get connectivity here on Ralph Stevens Road, and we felt like it's very important for us to get up to here and then go westbound. Obviously, we would have to do some connectivity points from this point going west. But we're trying to construct this greenway process. Obviously, it's, it's not been up to the standards that people want here in town. So every piece that we can get and connect the dots, that was the, that's the intent for us to make sure we have a viable connectivity throughout town. And obviously with Lowe's and, you know, Wegmans, that's a very big point where people want to get to. So we really want to get that connection there. And again, there are connectivity coming from the south, from Fuquay, Route 55, there's possibilities there. So we're really looking at every place that we can develop a greenway, we're looking to do so.
I understand that. I just wish we would consider, I don't know what anybody else feels, at least you're not in the back of these people's yards, if that was the original intent.
We have a lot of greenways in town that are abutting people's properties, but they tend to have more natural features on the other side of the greenway. So there isn't so much of a, of a buffering impact by the, those greenways. Whereas here, we are, have a large commercial presence between the greenway and the residential. So it, I understand what you're saying, but it, it also is impacting the ability to better buffer that area from commercial, is, is what I'm seeing.
So you would like to have a bigger buffer between those and push the greenway further into the property? Would that, is that the solution?
I don't know what the solution is specifically, or what options we have. Just the one line of trees there, or inability to create some sort of berm or, or something else to help reduce the, the visual impact and sound impact of the commercial there, which is why I was asking why we didn't choose the sidewalk for that little, I mean, we have a kind of a triangle right there, right, with the greenway and, and the sidewalk.
Well, we did talk to certain residents about this, or in particular Susan, and she, we did talk about if we did go through the neighborhood, now instead of people, if you're coming from the Adams property, now you're kind of up through the neighborhood, up on sidewalks and riding bikes and, you know, it's just not as safe. People don't like the sidewalk action as much as you like the greenways. We felt like, would you rather have them going on the Lowe's property, or would you rather have them go through your neighborhood? If we get that connectivity from Peak Hang Grove South, if we get the connectivity from Fuquay coming up this way, you know, would, which direction would you rather have them go? And I thought, you know, obviously I didn't poll a lot of the folks there, but if they did come up through the neighborhood, I figured that would be more intrusive than coming up through the Adams property than going on the Lowe's property to get it up to Ralph Stevens.
I think there'd be an argument to say, you expect traffic in the front of your house, but the back of the house, you want more privacy. So I think, I think that that might be more for those neighbors. I, I think they'd rather have that.
Okay.
But I get the greenway, but I, I think is there a way that we could connect it, either going back closer to the other plan and, and thinking about crossing, because we're crossing roads anyway, or sidewalks, because the back of the people's yards is, is a big inconvenience.
Do we have any other neighborhoods that have the greenways going through neighborhoods down the streets, like you're talking about, the alternative?
A lot of our neighborhoods right now, we don't really have greenways going through them. They just, people can use sidewalks and the road if they want to ride their bikes or, or ride. But again, what's been happening over the past is.
But those are people in the neighborhoods, not people cutting through. That's what I would worry about either way, wherever the greenway is. So.
Right.
Because you're near, I mean, this is our connection, crossing the street. For safety-wise, I think going to the neighborhood.
Well, if you're, if you're riding a bike, I'm sorry.
No, and then, but then, you know, I understand the concerns of the citizens.
Safety-wise, in the back of their yards, you know.
I'm thinking the people walking and riding their bikes and the, and the kids and stuff that are going down the streets now through someone's neighborhood where cars are coming down Wild Holly and stuff like that, you know, but then you're talking about, then we have the residents that don't want in the backyard. I mean, that's a lot of our development now that we're requiring greenways, we're seeing going to the back of places. So it's something we need to think about.
There is a danger though, if you're riding up the sidewalk or riding a bike on the sidewalk, you know, every time you cross a garage path or someone's driveway, you're looking over your shoulder. So again, it was more of a safety concern, you know, if you have someone going a greenway, then there's less interruptions, less intersections that you have to bypass. And it's safer for kids, learning how to ride bikes and, and all those things. So it's, I understand both sides of it. I get where you're coming from. Again, the intent with, of this was to keep people off the Wildwood Farm roadway, using Lowe's property, the safest means possible, and having some connectivity that we haven't had in the past. So those were the goals looking at for this.
Connectivity, I approve of. I'm, I'm just, is there another way, except the back there?
Is there any progress to your conversation with the apartments over there? At one point, we were exploring a, a greenway through there.
We looked at going straight west across and, and connecting to the exchange. They have a natural greenway, and we were talking about maybe combining and looking into that. We didn't get much traction with that, and those Lowe's needed a decision. So we decided at that point, let's go straight up to Ralph Stevens. There's just been not a lot of back and forth like we wanted it to be. So.
They have a, they have a natural greenway already on their plan?
It's natural and it is a private currently.
Is there a piece of land between that and this? That, is there a piece of land between that property and this property that they would have to come through?
Yes, we, well, Lowe's owns up into the property line, and there's a low-lying area, and then the exchange owns that property. So there is a, I think, a, a small piece of land that Wildwood Farms owns that we would have to get an easement across to get to that point. But we did explore that. We thought it would be a good idea, but, you know, we had to move forward with this plan, and we weren't getting much traction with the exchange. So we decided to go north and connect to Ralph Stevens Road. And basically, they have a four, a five-foot wide sidewalk now. It was just going to a 10-foot wide sidewalk.
And that plan would have been straight across at the curve, right? Would have been that connection?
Yes, sir. It would have gone straight across. We would have had to build a bridge across a low-lying area and then go straight over to the exchange connected there, and then hopefully get to Pine Grove, Wilbon. That was the goal.
Is it still accessible, even though this comes out to Ralph Stevens? Is that still an option higher or somewhere else?
It could be an option if we could work with the exchange.
With them?
Because we can connect to that, that greenway at some point in time. It's a possibility.
Are we at a point yet to decide what we want to do on this? I think that's on the table. Sidewalk, greenway, greenway sidewalk, whatever.
That's what we're discussing is.
Yeah.
I mean, what the options are.
That's my question.
Can we get better buffering between the greenway and the property line as it's currently proposed? Right now, it's just a single row of trees.
I would have to defer to, to, to somebody else that would handle the buffering.
It's 20 feet from the greenway.
I mean, is there room to do that?
The only, well, I'll let someone else tackle that. With the, I do know with the access road, because where it's positioned, you know, that would create somewhat of an issue, but, you know, I would let architects and the engineers decide, you know, if they can move further, further east. I do know that this area here is going to be more of a natural area. We're going to keep it so that, you know, we had a lot of trees there that, we already have a natural area, and they were trying to keep that as much as possible. But as far as buffering, I would let Todd or someone else from engineering come up and talk and go to that level.
One quick question for you specifically. Can you just enlighten us with regards to ordinances related to greenway use and ordinances being contemplated with regards to hours of use, motorized vehicles, just general, the intent of their use?
Okay. Normally, what we'd like is obviously dusted on like we do most of our major parks. You know, we have that, that type of rule that we would have in place. And that's, right now, there's an ordinance that says that all of our parks and greenways fall under that statute, a dusted on, unless otherwise, the town manager or a designate can, can apply those rules, and we post those on the internet. And so that, that would be the given principle.
Thank you.
Is there a way we can move forward with some of the site plan, but say, but greenway still yet to be worked out as we work through options?
Counselor, your opinion?
Yeah, I, I think you can approve the site plan subject to some revisions with respect to the greenway placement and buffering. It's certainly cleaner to bring back to you the, the final version, version of it, so that it's sort of in the record here. So in 10 years, we're not having to recreate. 10 years, we're not having to recreate, was the greenway supposed to be there, or not supposed to be there? Was the buffer supposed to be 20 feet, 30 feet? You know, so it's, it's certainly cleaner to have the final version here before you, and then you vote on it, and then it's sort of sealed in the record. But I, you know, I, I think you can probably grant preliminary approval and let them get started, and reserve approval of the greenway location and the buffer on the western and southern border, you know. If you're good with everything else, and you want to make the waiver findings, and that gets everybody moving along.
I think we're good with, I'm good with everything else, but I really feel like we haven't, we need to think through this more a little bit.
But we have to do it quickly. We can't-
We have to do, I understood, but, you know, I think the Wegmans and Lowe's has been great to hear the residents. It feels like they're, we're still talking through things and figuring out with Parks and Rec. I'd hate to make a decision tonight when there's a little bit more refinement we could do to, to build more of a win-win.
Well, the question comes to my mind, I think I've got the, my own answer is, the location of the greenways, or a greenway, or this or that, will not, and I'm asking, will not inhibit the going ahead with the plans that we've talked about, and then come back on that one item later on?
Well, soon.
Is there anything that'll slow you up? Location of the greenways, period?
I think if we get government approval tonight, especially the last, we can work with that. It's going to have to be put on top of the board.
And our, and our changes can't, I mean, if we're going to do that, what worries me is we've just got to work with the suggestions that have come before. So if we go too, you know, into anything that's going to interrupt these plans. But yeah, we definitely, I think we need to-
Randy, could we get something, you know, within a week or so, to look at options, working with Parks and Rec, engineering, as, as well as the folks from Lowe's, what potential that option could be, whether it's a buffer, what's, you know, what's the footage? Is that something we can get in a week or so?
No, absolutely. Staff can work on that and, and work with the applicant to, to work through some options. You also have your first meeting in May, which is May 7th. Yes, May 7th. That would be the next time that you would come back together as a body to take any action. We can certainly provide some additional information over the course of the next week or so.
I think that's the best option right now, right? Y'all agree?
Looks like it.
To, to hold everything out, or approve something on the greenway?
No, no, prove-
Subject to the greenway only.
Yeah.
Are the greenways, or where, that?
Yeah.
Which is a greenway, which is a walk, which is nothing? So it's only subject to that one item. The rest of it, I don't think there's any reason not to go. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Mayor and Council, if I could just make sure that, that I understand, these would be options, whether it relates to buffering and/or location of the, of the, of the greenway?
Correct.
Yep.
And maybe some pros and cons or considerations associated with each?
So I guess both of these motions would have to deal with that one issue, am I correct? Or just one of the two?
So, your first motion here is to make and accept findings of fact based on the waivers that, that you're looking at, and none of those have to do with the location of the construction of the greenway or the buffer, so-
That doesn't need a what-if type thing, okay. Let's go with motion one then. How about two? Well, go ahead.
Why do you want to look at that one?
Go back.
Okay.
Let's do one. Shall we?
Okay. Motion to adopt resolution 19-12 to make and accept the findings of fact for waivers of architectural and design requirements, 19-wav-03, 19-wav, can I say on this, that's on the screen?
Yes.
On the screen. Waiver of off-street parking requirements, 19-wav-01, and waiver of pedestrian circulation and vehicular area design requirements, 19-wav-02, in association with development petition 18-dp-15, for Lowe's home improvement Wegmans, as submitted by Freeland and Kaufman as specified in Exhibit A, and with additional findings of fact as specified in Exhibit C, if any.
Second.
Motion's been made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number two, please.
Having made findings of fact that the project meets requirements to be granted waivers of the unified development ordinance, motion to approve waivers of architectural and design requirements, as shown on the screen, waiver of off-street parking requirements, 19-wav-01, and waiver of pedestrian circulation and vehicular area design requirements, 19-wav-02, in association with development petition 18-tp-15 for Lowe's improvement Wegmans, as submitted by Freeland and Kaufman, with conditions as specified in Exhibit D, if any.
Second.
Motion's been made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now number three.
And this is where you'd want to add a condition to hold off on any approval of the location of a greenway, subject to future approval by this board?
And Mayor and Council, I would like to add in addition, that the, the site plan provided by the applicant does include changes since planning board in relation to the green, the, the movement of landscape material adjacent to the greenway on the south side of the project, as well as placement of fence. In addition, you heard tonight some discussion regarding a 10-foot high fence. If those are items that you would like to include and be approving, we would also recommend modifying this motion in addition to, to have the changes as illustrated by the applicant on their site plan. So that site plan is different from the one in your packet that you would otherwise be moving forward with.
But are those maybe under consideration as part of us considering the greenway?
I had only heard the greenway is consideration, not the height, fence of height, or the placement of landscape on the southern portion of the property.
Or the removal of the sign.
Or the removal of the sign on the back of the building.
So do we agree with, should we agree with one, with going from eight to 10 foot?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we agree with the removal of the signage in the rear of the building?
Aren't they going to have to come back for a site plan, or a sign plan anyway?
Yes, correct. It's for illustration purposes only.
And then we're subject to-
Location.
Location of the greenways?
Yeah.
Okay.
Relocation of plant material. I think we wanted, because they moved some of the plants back to that buffer on that, where the access road is.
Who wants to tackle it?
And the other, the one I had was the additional screenings from Ralph Stevens Road down to that, where the Market Cafe is, for the pool on the corner. Some of those plannings they had up there to modify that and bring them down to the corner.
All right. You got that, Dan, or do you want to?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, you had, you're adding more and more, and I'm writing stuff down. Oh, boy. Motion to, we good?
Five things. Go ahead.
Okay. Motion to approve development plan 18dp-15 for Lowe's home improvement and Wegmans, as submitted by Freeland and Kaufman, dated revised 2/27/19, with the conditions listed in the agenda packets, and the following conditions: that the applicant change the fence from an eight-foot fence to a 10-foot fence on the south property line, relocation of plant materials as shown in the, in the site plan shared this evening, removal of the sign in the rear of the Wegmans building, modification to plant location related to the corner of the Wegmans building, and moving some material from the Ralph Stevens Road buffer yard to the corner there. And lastly, that this plan is subject to finalization of a greenway location after some further work with staff to be approved by this body.
Second.
Second. Motion's been made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, honor in effort.
Let's try. Want to give him a second?
Sure.
I've got like an hour of grants to go through, too, so.
Yeah. Motion to table the rest of the agenda.
It'll come back.
Okay. Just for the record, Agenda Item 10D has been postponed. And we go to the last item on the agenda. Tenny Fiscal Year 2018-19 Nonprofit Grants. And I guess, Dan, did that one off?
Yep, we're still, we're still good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to discuss the nonprofit civic agency grant process that we do, just as edification for those in the audience and those in our viewing audience. Every year, the council typically will allocate $15,000 in our budget for civic agencies within our community that do a lot of good work and need funding assistance. Every year, a committee of the council comprised of myself, Councilwoman Lee, and Councilman Villicson solicit applications through our town clerk's office, and we evaluate the merit of the agencies that submit a request for funding anywhere from $500 up to $2,500. And each of those agencies that submit are rated on the scale that you see on the screen, depending on how they partner with the town, or if there's, you know, specified public purpose, how much of their annual budget they request, if their request is $500 or less, and if they're based here in Holly Springs. And then lastly, how significant their balance sheet looks in the terms of their financial position. So we go through this every year and evaluate the merits of, of the groups that apply in order to determine how the $15,000 should be allocated across the different groups. Go to the next slide for me. This is the Grant Committee's recommendations of how to split the funding, as well as, across the top, you have all the groups that applied, and then in the bold numbers on the grid would be their ranking based on the last criteria. The highest number you can get is a seven, the lowest would be a zero, so anywhere on that scale, seven being the most, most worthy perhaps, and then, you know, the lower you get, maybe not so much. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll go through each of these that we received. It's not going to be in the same order, just based on my notes, so just bear with me as I try to remember where I'm at here and go through each of these and describe what was applied for and what the committee recommends. I will start with Hoptimus Prime, which was a new submission this year. This is the high school robotics club that strives to instill STEM competencies to complement the core curriculum at the high school. They won their state competition in 2017 and 2018. They'll use this money for supplies, event registration, and expenses for some of the competitions they do and the robot build they do every year. I think some of us were able to attend their unveil this year of the robot that they've, they've built. Their first-time new submission this year, they've applied for $500, and the grant committee is pleased to recommend a grant of $500 to that group. The next one I have is the Holly Grove Middle School PTSA. Last year, they were awarded funding that they used for their art department. This year, they're requesting funding for materials and a program to increase financial literacy amongst the students. It's a Dave Ramsey program. They're looking to purchase and make that available to all the students at the middle school. Last year, I believe, they got 500, they got, they were awarded 500 last year. The committee is pleased to recommend the same amount this year of $500. They applied for 1,500, but as, as you can see with all the different groups that, that have applied, we do our best to evaluate the need and spread the money out as best as we can. The next one's the Holly Springs Community Band. A lot of us have probably heard, has heard and seen them in town. They partner quite essentially in town events and hold different concerts at the cultural center. The funding helps them purchase equipment like music stands, lights, and instruments in order to make resources available to their members of all economic backing. They do a significant amount of partnering with the town in some of our Christmas time events and tree lightings and things like that. They apply for $2,000 this year. That's the same amount they were awarded last year. The grant committee is pleased to recommend a $2,000 funding allotment to the Holly Springs Community Band. Next one is the Food Cupboard. Funding from this one, funding from the town is used here to purchase perishable items like milks, milk, eggs, cheese, and produce. These food items help provide a better level of nutrition to clients and residents in our own town that are in need. This grant helps increase the number of, of people that the organization consists in a year, can assist in a year. This one, they've, they've applied for $2,500. They applied for that amount and received that amount last year. You know, this, this is probably one of the ones that hits, hits close to home for a lot of people in Holly Springs. They get a lot of food through donations, fund drives, and things like that, but using the town money to buy those perishable items and increase the level of nutrition for folks that are in need is, is really a worthy cause. So the, the committee has in the past awarded $2,500, and is pleased this year to award the same amount of $2,500 to the Food Cupboard. The Holly Springs High School Golden Hawks Band. This is a club organization at the high school, open to all students who pay the membership dues. Funding provided last year was used to replace and up, and upgrade an aging sound system with new speakers and a keyboard. They're looking to use this year's funding towards the purchase of a new marimba for percussion. That's about a $4,000 cost. The grant committee evaluated their application, and they had asked for $2,500. They received $2,000 in 2018, and the grant committee is pleased to match that recommendation in 2019 for funding in the amount of $2,000, which would effectively pay for half of the equipment they're looking to purchase this year. The next group is the Martin Luther King Committee. This is a group that partners in town events quite extensively with our MLK Unity Weekend every year, and a group that we've funded in the past. Last year, they were awarded $500, have applied for the same amount this year. That funding will be used for, there's a late-breaking change here, so I'm just making sure I get this right. That, that funding will be used for supporting school projects to help with free lunch and snacks, and provide school supplies at at least one of the local elementary schools within Holly Springs during the summer months. And the, the MLK Committee also does a event in the summertime over at Wambel Park as well, so perhaps they'll find a way to coincide this timing with that. But a very worthy group that we have here in town. The grant committee is pleased to recommend $500 to them, same as what we had done in the prior year. The next group is the Holly Springs High School PTSA. The high school PTA has a teacher grant program to provide funding to teachers for educational materials and supplies. The PTSA matches the town's contribution to double the pot of grants available to teachers. Last year, the PTSA was able to almost triple the town's amount to have a successful grant program. We funded them with $1,500 last year. They gave back about $4,500 to different teachers throughout the high school that were able to go and purchase supplies for their classrooms and spread that, spread that wealth around for the students. The grant committee this year is, is pleased to recommend the same amount of funding, $1,500, to the high school PTSA, which they will then double for a total economic impact of $3,000 within the high school ecosystem. The next group is Interact, which is a county nonprofit that provides services for victims and survivors of sexual assault and domestic violence. While they're not located in Holly Springs, the organization served 94 people who had Holly Springs zip codes last year, and that's probably not all of them, because due to safety reasons and confidentiality requirements, not all of their users disclose where they are from. So they do have 94 people. It could be a lot more than that. This is Wake County's only shelter for, for abused women and children. They're, they are heavily funded by the county, but we do see a need every year, and this, this number has actually increased from what it was in 2018 for the number of Holly Springs residents that did identify themselves as having to use the shelter. So the grant committee is pleased to maintain the same level of funding we had last year and recommend a grant of $1,000 to Interact. The next one is the Kiwanis Club. This is a major, they're the major party behind our Happy Holidays Parade and Kids Appreciation Day. They partner in, in all these town events. They do receive parade revenues for entry fees and things like that, but use this grant money to offset the costs wholly of the Kids Appreciation Day, which is open to all residents. I believe that's coming up in May, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. They've asked for $2,500. Last year, they were awarded $1,500 for the same purpose, and the grant committee is pleased to maintain that funding amount of $1,500 for Kids Appreciation Day, again in the spirit to do our best to spread the money throughout all of those groups that applied. The next group I have is the Launch Holly Springs. So I think we're all familiar with that one. They've been in front of us several times in the last couple of months about the good work they're doing with entrepreneurs and bringing a business mindset to small businesses, helping them with mentorship and coaching within Holly Springs. This was a new application this year, but if you look, we, we eliminated the groups that did not reapply from the prior year, but the Rotary Club had, had applied last year and received funding. This year, they did not apply, but the Launch Holly Springs program is chartered by Rotary International, so a little different use, more directed in this one than it was previously with just a blanket Rotary, Rotary Club funding request. They requested, they requested $1,000, and the grant committee is pleased to recommend $500 to- They requested $1,000, and the grant committee is pleased to recommend $500 to Launch Holly Springs. The reasoning for that amount was because just earlier this year, the Economic Development Department actually contributed $1,000 out of their budget to this group to fund lunches and other program materials. So they've already got that funding. I think we've all seen the benefits of what this program is doing in our small business community, so we're happy to recommend the 500 and meet them halfway on that request. The next group is Sense of Play. They're raising funds to build an inclusive playground for all children, including handicapped or special needs kids. Last year, they used funds received to promote the cause and increase donations. We had awarded them $500 for the first time they applied last year, and the committee is pleased to recommend a $500 funding amount to them again this year. They applied for quite a substantial amount. I think that was in funding hopes to maybe get some more funds to build the playground, buy equipment and things like that. So it was a little over where we see most of these applications, but we're happy to provide the same funding that we did last year and understand the work that they do in town to solicit that park and continue to push that forward. The next one is another new group this year. This is a group that solicits harvested deer for venison donations back to those in need in the local community. The group partners with the Food Cupboard to provide protein to local residents in need, so they are requesting funds to help pay for the processing of donated deer. The $500 that they're requesting will provide 1,330 meals of protein back within our local community. That's the Southwest, I'm sorry, the South Wake Conservationalists, and they are chartered by the North Carolina Wildlife Foundation. I've participated in a similar program in Pennsylvania, so I've seen the fruits of this with deer that I've harvested and haven't had a need for, and I've donated them. So I've personally seen the work that groups like this can do. They partner in town with the Food Cupboard, and the grant committee thought that was a worthy cause this year and is pleased to recommend a funding amount of $500 for them this first year. The last group that I have for funding allotment would be the South Wake Lions Club. Last year, the group received funds to purchase a vision screener and funds to supplement the hayride event at Holly Fest for costumes and makeup, while they solicit volunteers and get people to come out, dress up, and they used an additional funding amount to be able to increase the level of service, if you want to call it that, for the hayride. This year, they're requesting funds to purchase a blackout tent, a printer, and accessories to increase effectiveness of vision screenings. That Martin Luther King event that I talked about earlier, last year at Wamboldt Park, the Lions Club was out there doing screenings, and it was so sunny and bright that day, they were trying to use tarps and different things to shade their tent and do effective screenings with the screener they had bought with the grant we gave them last year. This time around, they want to get a tent that they can actually have a blackout to be able to effectively conduct the screenings. So the grant committee is pleased to recommend a funding amount of $1,500 to the Lions Club to be able to purchase that. They received $2,000 last year, but again, half of that was directed towards the hayride. This year, they'd only applied for that single use for the tent and some accessories to go with that. So we're pleased to present that recommendation for $1,500. I'll touch briefly on a couple of the clubs that were submitted, and the grant committee made a recommendation not to fund and why we did that, and then happy to discuss all of this at the end. The first one is the Holly Springs Adams, which is a youth baseball organization. The committee decided not to fund this one due to our budgetary investments in parks and rec programs that include baseball and softball that are open to all Holly Springs residents, so we feel like we're making adequate investments in parks and rec programs and making baseball available to our youth. This one is a little bit of a segmented use, club baseball, and we just thought that there were other organizations that we could further the public purpose of the funds with in town. The next one is the Pre-Aclampsia Foundation, a very worthy cause. A local couple in Holly Springs is working with the Raleigh Pre-Aclampsia Walk for Hope, looking to raise money, and the committee discussed this, and while we agree that this was a good cause, there was not a tangible direct impact or public purpose in Holly Springs. There certainly could be folks affected by this within Holly Springs, but what we've seen is there's a lot of different walks and things like that, and I think that's a little bit outside of what we strive to achieve with these grants. And if we funded one now, we think we would establish a precedent to start funding other ones in the future. And as a group, I think the committee decided to maybe move away from that model and kind of focus on the civic agencies that we typically solicit through this program. The last one was the YMCA of the Triangle. They requested funding to support their programs. We have the Kraft Family YMCA over off Kildare Farm Road is the closest one to us. Their organization is membership-based. They have a very healthy balance sheet. If you look through their packet, they provided a lot of materials, have several hundred million dollars in assets. The committee does not dispute the active, good work they do within our community, but the amount of money we would have been able to provide, in our opinion, would have provided very minimal public purpose and advancing their efforts probably in Holly Springs. We just don't think the return on that investment was going to be there, perhaps, as it would have been in some of these other groups, not to diminish their work, but they don't seem to have issues with membership and raising funds, and we thought we could reinvest that money in other places in the community. So that was why we decided not to fund the YMCA of the Triangle. So those were the three that we didn't fund. I think I touched on each one of these. In total, there was over $30,000 requested, which is about double the amount that we had requested last year. So notice of this program and awareness of it is getting out there, and it's great to have new groups every year that are applying as more people in town become familiar with this.
I think, Dan, this year, we actually publicized it where it was not done before. I think that's one of the things that happened.
Okay, yeah, that's great. So we went through and allocated the 15,000 we have. Obviously, there's, based on the applications, there's need for more than that, but we're happy to be able to recommend the full $15,000 to the full council and happy to entertain any discussion or thoughts that we have on moving forward with these grants.
Just for the record, I wanted to let you all know that I am a member of the MLK Committee, and I did speak to the town attorney, and he had mentioned to me that it is okay to vote on this, correct? So I just want to let you know there's no conflict of interest, so I just want to let you all know.
Similarly, I'm on the MLK Committee, not on the board, and I'm also a Rotarian, but through the same guidelines that I'm allowed to vote. This is outstanding, guys. You guys did a great job on this grid and the work you've done. I concur with everything you put on this grid.
Yep.
And I guess I'm a member of the Lions Club. And I have a child at Holly Grove Middle. And a couple at the high school, but yeah, I'm the same.
Disclosure's good.
Yes.
I'm a member too of some of these, but I don't vote, so. Unless there's a tie.
Yeah, I think, let's skip ahead a couple of slides. Let's just go ahead and get the motion out of the way for this one. Or actually, I'll just make the motion to, I will make the motion to award the $15,000 2019 local civic nonprofit grant funds to the groups listed on the screen with those amounts.
Second.
What's been made in second in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed unanimously. Good job.
All right. This year was a little different for our committee because earlier this year, we had former Senator, State Senator Behringer here to present a grant of $50,000 of North Carolina General Assembly funding to the town of Holly Springs for a couple of different programs in order to further their work within our town. The committee viewed this outside of the $15,000 that we allocate annually because this was money that was accepted specifically for three programs that were listed from the senator when we received that money. A check was received from the General Assembly that the town has cashed and deposited. It's now retained by the town, has not been appropriated. The decision at the time that the council made was to refer that funding to the grant committee for discussion and evaluation. So during this process, applications were filled out for each of these groups requesting the full amount of funding that was provided. So the senator had requested $20,000 to school safety programs, $15,000 to the mayor's youth advisory board, and $15,000 to the anti-bullying committee. The committee discussed each of these, and let me just go through the notes that I have and the recommendations that we have here. So the mayor's anti-bullying committee strives to raise awareness and reduce the effects of bullying in our community. The committee, on both the mayor's youth advisory board and the anti-bullying committee, the committee had asked for additional information, such as a budget for how these funds are going to be spent and detailed financials on how the group is currently funded for both of those two groups. In all the applications we have for those other civic agencies, it's very common, if you request over $500, we require that you submit a budget in your financials with that package so we can review and go through this criteria. We received information on how the money was to be spent programmatically, but not a lot of financial details to understand how the groups are funded, and then a budget for the current year and how these funds were going to be allocated within those groups. Because of that, the committee was not comfortable allotting the full amount of money at this time. We've asked in discussion with the mayor, who's then translated back to those groups, to have those teams work on compiling that information and coming back, and I think the grant committee is willing to do this as often as we need to until those funds are expended, whether that's two months, three months, six months, next year, however we divvy it up. As they compile those materials, we're happy to come back and reevaluate the need, the public purpose, how much is being requested, how much of that is going to benefit right here in Holly Springs, and some specific ideas on what they're going to be using the funding for. But that being said, I think the committee's thought process was that each of these groups are doing good things in their own right within the town, and we did not think that not funding them was the right approach. So because of that, we've taken or made a recommendation to fund $5,000 to the anti-bullying committee. That money would essentially be used for furthering their programs, their booths at Holly Fest, their booths at the farmer's market, materials to support that effort, and then $2,500 for the youth advisory board. That one, a smaller amount, just because the needs of the funding in that group are not quite as defined as they were with anti-bullying. And again, those groups are going to work on getting those financials coming back to us and having a more concrete budget on how they're going to be allotted. School safety programs, I think this one was a little easier to go through for us. As part of the package from the General Assembly, $20,000, or I think that was 40% of that money was supposed to go to school safety programs and supplies. We had worked with Mr. Pittman, who's the former principal at Holly Springs High School and now runs all high school programs across Wake County schools, and he had helped us get in touch with all the different principals at the schools within Holly Springs. The grant committee came up with a formula in how to fund this program. So we have middle schools, we have high schools, we have elementary schools scattered all throughout the town. I think we're up to, I have 11, actually 12. There is 12, we'll get to 12. We have 11 to find, but there is probably a 12th we need to fix here. But what we are recommending is the $20,000 be fully allocated this year, and in order to do that, we're asking the manager work with the school board and the Wake County public school system in order to negotiate a mutual, call it a contract or dispersment of these funds to the school board, which then can be passed on to each of the schools. We're recommending $1,000 for elementary schools, $2,000 for middle schools, and $3,000 for high schools. The reasoning there is just purely numbers and populations. There's a lot more elementary schools, so we wanted to spread that out and make sure everybody got something. The middle schools and high schools have a lot larger of a student base, and we thought that warranted more funding, so we're recommending those amounts. The one thing that was not on here was Middle Creek. I believe that's a middle school.
No.
Is it a high school? Okay. So it's a high school. We had, so that's a little problematic in a way. The funding amounts you see on the screen amount to $18,000, if my math is correct. We've funded the high schools $3,000, so if Middle Creek is the high school, we have $2,000 left out of that pot, which we had designated for something else, but understanding now that Middle Creek, we have students from Holly Springs that are going there, we probably should get them that funding as well to be consistent. So we can use $2,000 to get to the even 20 or discuss how to make up the other $1,000 to do that, but happy to discuss that. But these are the committee's recommendations for how to distribute the school funds, and then on the previous slide, the other two groups.
I think you guys have done a great job with this as well. One of the things, when I went back in October to look at when we received that money, it said that we were receiving it under the grant committee rules. And so when I look at it, it seems to me that we should really be applying the grant committee rules to this money as well. The anti-bullying group is a 501(c)(3), so that makes sense. In this rule, it sounds like if we followed them, we would give them $500 now, but wait for them to figure out where the rest of the money is financially and cap at $2,500. The other group is not even a company yet that I know, but there is a provision that they could find a 501(c)(3) to help them, like the Rotary did with Launch, that if they could find a group to do so, and then they would also be able to get the $2,500. And my thought would be that we could give these groups six months to do that right so they're able to get to the $2,500. But besides that, it goes outside of our rules, and I really thought when we accepted this money, that we would be doing it within these rules. And I think Senator Behringer's goals are great, and we should support that. If she felt really adamant about giving a lot of money, then she should give it directly to those groups and not have it go through the town. So that's my idea is that we accepted it, saying it would be under the grant committee. We have rules, we've made all these other nonprofits go through those rules, but I think that that would be something that I'd like for us to consider and either keep some of that money for further years for these groups, or decide to give the balance to the schools and just disperse it. If you want to get rid of the money, then that's a way to do it. Still honor the goals, but then still honor the rules that all the other nonprofits have to go through.
This has been a very frustrating and very heavy-duty project for me. I sent information on this on March the 2nd, and we have now got to this point. The concern I have here is, and I can appreciate all the comments, it's a very different deal. This money was given to the town through me from Senator, and at that point in time, my commitment was that, for instance, in this one, all the monies would be agreed to by Brian Pittman. That was her request. So Brian Pittman worked with us, worked with me, and that's pretty much what we came up with. But to start shifting around big dollars, like, well, I don't think this is any good, so I'm going to give $10,000 to somebody else, I feel very uncomfortable about that because that was not her intent, and she was the one that gave us the money, not me. So I think that's going to be taken into consideration too, that I have certain commitments to make for her, that she came up with this money, this is what she intended to have done.
Did she ever explain why she just didn't give the money directly and not? Because that's the thing, is we took that money, so then I feel like we have to put it through our rules.
I don't think she could have. I think if we go back to some of the things that were done in the past with the legislature...
Yeah, I think the way they disperse it...
Well, then it's not fair for us to take money and break rules either, because we have rules.
But to me, that grant money, that money did not fall under our grant system because, one, it's not the Holly Springs taxpayers' money that we have budgeted as we've done in the years past. It's a whole different thing, which means, you know, it's something we have to discuss now, as for when future money comes in, does it fall under that? I think it's just outside the regular grant money.
Then we should have discussed it when we were accepting the money, because when we accepted the money, we said it would go under the grant committee rules. That was my understanding.
I think the grant committee really tried to follow the spirit of the policy here in terms of not just giving the money blind away without some sort of assurance of future budgetary information, but also to honor the fact that the money was given and to provide some amount of money. While the policy statements, and there are quite a few of them, reflect numbers and scoring and so forth, I mean, the final one is, "The council may, in its discretion, evaluate any application without regard to the provisions of this policy." I don't think we did it without disregard, but I think we tried to honor the policy statement, but also honor the money that was given to the town.
Again, at that meeting, when she presented the check, she went through these numbers, and I haven't heard a thing against that until right now. And I got to take exception to that, I'm sorry.
Well, it was a recommendation, Mayor, and I think we were going to put it through the grant process, so we followed. We've done exactly what we said we would do with that money. So how do we give money to a company that doesn't exist?
A what?
It's an organization, it's a club or a group.
Well, who do you cut the check for? There's no, it's not an entity. It's not an entity.
You have a bank account, the mayor's youth advisory board. In the past, I think it's that they... It gets written to the mayor's youth advisory board in their bank account.
So, I mean, the town could administer the funds. The, you know, the board, the mayor's youth advisory board says, "We need money for our operations," and the finance department can, you know, use that money and set it off. Just treat, in essence, treat the mayor's youth advisory board as a town department with that, with those funds.
But that's another discussion. We've never... This is not an official town function or group. It has never been formalized. It doesn't go through the council. So I'm uncomfortable with the town managing money for, you know, we all are nonprofits. To me, that falls more within that world than an extension of our council.
Again, I have to take exception with all due respect. This has been on the docket since March. I've never heard anything, and nobody said anything when she presented a check for us for $50,000. This is not, this was not, at that point in time, town money. This came from the legislature. And there are differentials, and there was agreements made, and nobody said a word until now. I'd rather send the whole damn thing back, to be honest with you. I'm not very happy.
I mean, if we're going to go with how you're saying that, then, I mean, the money was given, she stood up there, she said how it was to be divided up.
Correct.
Then we, you know, you're talking about putting it under the grant committee and how we're going to disperse it. We're trying, so, Mayor, we're trying to figure out how we can do this as it's written out here, where we, you know, we start getting a little money, you know, we see a budget, financials, start towards the process of how our grant committee works. In six months, we see that, you know, you come up with a different plan, more money's dispersed. I don't agree with taking the rest of that money and putting it elsewhere.
That's wrong.
But I see starting slow, seeing how it's going to be spent, and then when we do talk about our grant policy, this will have to be discussed when money like this is given. That's mine.
Well, as I said, I got my information, and this is not a criticism at all. Dan and I, Dan Barry, and I met on Friday, went through the numbers for me the first time, the way it is. Okay? I have no big deal about that. Because I told Dan, I said, "Look, I'm prepared to go, at this point in time, with the school safety information, because it's pretty cut and dry." Blah, 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 blah. This has been going on now for three months, four months. I don't have all the financials for the others. As a matter of fact, in one case, the, well, a couple of cases, there's hardly any money until anyway. In the case of the school safety board, there's no money and no detail. But that's a different story, because it's here in front of us. But the other two, I can have the details, and I guess we table a lot of things, I can have the details for those two probably within a week, but I couldn't have it in two days. Just the way it is. I'm not complaining, I'm just saying...
That's fine. I think that's why the committee recommended the amounts that we did, that we cede the money and give the groups time to do that, right? Whether it's in two days, two weeks, three months, however long it takes, I don't think it matters from a committee standpoint. It doesn't matter.
I guess the policy doesn't apply for this, right?
Even if it did, we could make an exception.
I'm just trying to... So we're not using the...
Yeah, I don't know how to answer that question. I recall when we made a motion to accept the $50,000, that it was referred to the grant committee to go through this vetting process that we do with the other ones.
That's what I recall.
There's three or four different versions of that policy that exist that have conflicting statements in some cases. So I think it's very hard to say this policy applies, this one doesn't, you know. To me, it's a little... I don't know. I don't know the answer to whether or not what policy applies to the $50,000 that we accepted. I think any layer of diligence that we applied as a council committee to that process made it better than just taking a check and passing it on and handing it out. So I think the process that we're going through is adding the necessary diligence to protect the taxpayers and make sure there's some financial control over how the money's being spent and utilized to get money back.
Well, I think John Adcock did it great, because he asked us for information. This one, we didn't really...
But we should have probably said...
If that was the case, though, I mean, at the time, if we were to do that, we would have to then make provisions. If it didn't meet, how does the money go if it did not meet specific policy, if we even had a specific and unique policy to that? As I said before, I think as Dan said, I think the committee did its best here to honor the policy, but also to reflect the reality of how this money was provided. There's no easy answer to that. There's no cut and dry thing to follow.
We just know we have some changes to make going forward.
Yeah, I think going forward, we probably are going to have to...
For next year's... Yeah.
Well, when we have money from, you know, the state...
I mean, we could have another policy that just clarifies state money or add that to the policy that we have, so it's very clear on how we review...
Policy, I mean, our own policy. So we're probably going to need to make some tweaks on that going forward.
I think just, in addition, we should review our own policy. The town has grown a lot. We've been stuck at $15,000 for a while. This is more publicized, more people are providing money. We need to, I think, revisit how much we want to allocate, if that could be increased, and also firm up the maximum amounts so that more people, more of our nonprofits in our community who do good for our community can partake of this grant money.
Well, then my ask is also for us to look at what some of these groups might be in between. They're not an outside nonprofit, and they're not a true town advisory board, a recognized committee. So let's figure what these two groups are. And then we can either fund them appropriately when we know what they are right now. To me, they're squishy.
Well, I'd like to have a resolve.
What? I'm sorry?
I'd like a resolve for tonight, possibly. There's a lot of people waiting for my follow-through on at least the first one, maybe on the second and third, too. Or not.
I mean, do we have a motion?
Well, on the... My thought is, when we receive the money, it was going to be vetted through the committee. But, you know, because we're receiving money from the state and what Dick is saying, he thought that was going to be allocated for those groups.
It said it was going to be allocated to those groups.
It was recommended to be allocated.
So the actual language from the state did say, "You have $50,000, Town of Holly Springs, to spend on school safety, mayor's youth advisory, and anti-bullying." And so, you know, you're trying to make a square peg unfortunately fit in a round hole because the state has told you how to spend this, how to spend and how much to spend on these three different buckets. The buckets were sort of artificially conflated or described by one member of the general assembly, who, you know, so the direction from the actual grant from the state did not split up those buckets, did not split them up in the way that she determined. So I think it's up to you to determine how you're going to spend it for those very loosely-defined purposes and what organizations, whether they be nonprofit or not, or me. You say, "John, I'm giving you $50,000. Go make the schools safer, go stop bullying, and help the mayor's youth advisory board." I think that's, you could do that to me, even though I'm not a 501(c)(3) or Randy or whomever. So, you know, I think your only obligation is to spend that $50,000 for those purposes. The fact that we, our policy requires the recipient to be a 501(c)(3) just gives some level of accountability, because that's sort of the blessing that the IRS sees that they are not not-for-profit, and if they do things, you know, they run the risk of getting their 501(c)(3) revoked. But we could, I mean, the town could be the IRS here and govern those groups to make sure that they're spending that $50,000 for the purpose that the general assembly directed us to do. So I just offer that, that, you know, and I'm speaking for the manager. You know, I think that level of accounting and accountability can be done regardless of if you give it to John, to Randy, to Daniel, the mayor, the mayor's board, or whomever. You know, there's no magic in it being a 501(c)(3).
Well, plus, all the checks are going to be written by finance. I don't touch them.
And I guess it's maybe...
A couple of people have asked that question, too, and I kind of take issue with that part, too. I don't see this money.
I guess just to add to what the town attorney said, I mean, essentially, you can spend the money for any governmental purpose. And so that's a pretty broad definition, but as long as it meets that threshold that you all determine, whether it's a nonprofit 501(c)(3) or some other organization, you get that choice to make.
So what do we do, troops?
I think for accountability, that we should be working with 501(c)(3)'s and have these groups do what they can, because it's part of the rules to try to figure out where the closest 501(c)(3) they could land through to make it so at least it's more in line with the rest of the groups that we have. But I honor the, you know, there's a lot we could do for school safety and bullying across the board, and there are a lot of organizations that can do that. So I want us to honor that intent. I just think that we have rules, we make every, other people go through those rules, we accepted that money thinking, I thought, going through these rules. But that's my opinion.
Okay.
I might not be. That's my opinion.
And my opinion is, by definition, with all due respect, I take total exception to that, okay? It's the way life is. Other thoughts?
So, John, if we were to write a check to an individual, we're okay with that?
I'm sorry, say that again.
So I'm just saying, we're okay if we write a check to an individual?
So if the, there's going to be some level of making sure with receipts, like we do, that if we wrote a check to the individual, the individual is buying, maybe is doing a speaker for, to talk about anti-bullying, or is doing, buying a camera to give to the, you know, a deer camera to give to the school safety resource officer to record where kids go in the back and smoke, or, you know, something like that. I mean, I, so, you know, there's going to be that level of a blank check? No. I don't think anybody's envisioning any person or group or anybody getting just a check for $12,000, whatever your number was, you know, and say, "Here, it's yours. Go with it," you know, that, be it the mayor or whomever. No, I don't, I don't, you know, I think what the committee is saying is, you know, for the, I guess it's real, the school, the only non-incorporated one is the school safety committee, or, I'm sorry, the mayor's youth advisory board. Is that correct? Because I think the recommendation of the committee is to actually write a check to the school.
School system, yeah.
The school system and say, "Here, basically do the same thing that the state did to you."
Yeah.
Here's $2,000. Do something with it to make your school safer, whatever that may be. You decide. However, with mayor's youth advisory board, you know, maybe there has to be some public purpose on how they're spending that money and, you know, it'll run through the whole wringer.
That's fine, but what do we write the check to?
Just, I mean, just like you could write a check to me when I go pay a filing fee at the courthouse, right? And then I'll reimburse the, I'll turn in the receipt, and the finance office says, "Yeah, that was for a public purpose. John went and sued somebody," and, you know, that's the filing fee. So there's a record of it, you know, some accounting.
Maybe the treasurer, the treasurer...
Is there a treasurer or...
Mr. Bev.
Yeah, there's a treasurer, but let's go back to this one right here. This will go to each school. The check will either be made to the school or to the principal, one of the two.
No, it has to be made to the school system.
Right? And the principal has the jurisdiction or the responsibility for making sure this fits the parameter of school safety and school supplies.
Right, but the school system has to administer that, right?
It doesn't go to the schools, it has to go to Wake County Public Schools. And then they, that, by law, by their, it has to.
I won't talk to her, which is a part of this. I have to talk to her after this, the grant committee chair.
Right, and she knows...
She'll tell you how to do it, yeah.
But they'll get the money. That money will, if you give her that, that's how it will be done. And then, like you said, it's up to the principals to decide from there. Yeah.
So I will now voice my objections to having, I like the money going to the youth advisory, but I think they should become, they should form and do their own company instead of us administering. Why are we taking this overhead? If they want to do this good work, well, then go form and be like everything else and go through this process like it should. This is too, that's a lot of burden for us to do. We've got lots of things to do. So I...
I give up.
Or, I mean...
I give up.
So, or give them the, what was it, $2,500, and then they prove to us, basically...
That's a bad precedent.
Well, I agree, and I haven't even done that yet. That's my problem.
But if we're going forward and we're changing things, we'll be able to put it more. We didn't do that this time. We have, you know, we can do what we want right now. That's going to change.
That wasn't my understanding, so...
Well, my understanding was that this money did, was to go to those three, and how we do it, you know...
And I agree, but they got documentation that proves that they're a nonprofit. That's what I'm asking for.
We're asking for the same things. I think we're just trying to meet in the middle and say, "Okay, look, there's $30,000 allocated for these two things. We're willing to fund $7,500 of that and withhold the other money until we're comfortable that there's some evidence of compliance with what the regulation or what our policy or whatever everyone else is doing." So we're trying to meet somewhere in the middle to say, "Look, we're not there yet. We still need to see some things if we want to unlock that other $22,500 and fund some of that stuff."
Well, I would...
I don't care anymore.
If we want to use that money, I think we should ask for them to become a real group and bring them up to the rules that we have. And I think it's a great opportunity. We can give more money to the schools, and then we've honored the intent of helping secure safety and bullying.
But went against her wanting us to give money to this other group.
It was a recommendation, and, you know, we have our own rules. When we take in money, we had our own rules. We should have talked about, you know...
Well, we should have said that right to her that night.
It was a recommendation, and I was told that we would go through the grant committee and I, looking at the rules, so...
You have a motion, you can vote on it. Or keep spinning our wheels. I don't think we're all, if anybody's going to be happy here tonight, that's the day.
Can we go back to the schools, reference to Middle Creek? That, I was thinking maybe, since it was, what, $2,000 left over?
Left over.
So I was thinking maybe $2,500 to Middle Creek and $2,500 to Apex Friendship? And then $3,000 for Holly Springs?
That's a great idea.
Does that math work?
Yeah.
No, that wouldn't work. Yeah, that would work. Yeah, you decrease Apex Friendship by 500 and then $2,500 at Middle Creek. Yep.
Yeah.
You all agree with that?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
All right, that's done.
Do you want to do them one at a time? Each group one at a time, or do we want to do them in bulk?
I would...
Okay.
Probably vote on that, right? And we still haven't determined how we're going to move forward with the other...
So let's just do them one at a time.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to award North Carolina General Assembly grant money to the Wake County Public School System in the amount shown on the screen, amending Apex Friendship High School to $2,500 and adding Middle Creek High School to $2,500 for a total of $20,000 for school safety, school safety and support programs to be administered by the individual principals.
Second?
Which has been made a second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
So the other slide had, it was a motion for all three together, I think, so we tackled one of those. There's two left. I think, so, we, we tackled one of those, there's two left.
So you said you wanted to split them up?
We can split them up or do the last two in one motion, I guess, either way.
Up to you.
Wait, you already did the school safety.
Right.
So, just a statement, yeah.
Right.
All right, motion to award 5,000 to the mayor's anti-bullying campaign and 2,500 to the mayor's youth advisory board.
Second?
Let's make a second all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
One nay. Motion passes.
I was just wondering, can the mayor's youth advisory board go under the anti-bullying 501(c)(3)? I'm not sure how that works.
Working on it right now, yeah.
I don't know how all that works.
Matter of fact, we had our first joint meeting for that purpose last week.
Then they can establish on their own?
Yeah. I just haven't had time to do it.
And for the committee, there's additional information for those two, correct, that you're gonna need?
Correct, yeah, and in order to achieve any more of the $22,500 in funding that remains, we've asked for a, a budget for how the money that we've provided is going to be spent, and then anything above and beyond that they want to spend, how that's going to be spent, what the purpose is, so we can go through the same criteria and evaluate that. In addition to the budget, have a detailed financial statement of, you know, how much money they have, where are they getting their money from, what is it being spent for, P and L?
Which I agreed to.
Which, which the teams are working on.
Okay.
And they, when they're prepared, they can submit the materials again and we'll go through the process and...
So at that time, they'll follow the rules?
Come back.
We've gotta, we've gotta work on those rules.
Right, I mean, in the, in the meantime, I think we, we need to, whether this needs to be a motion or not, we need to refer that policy for some, some touching and...
And I'd say you already have, in, in one of your prior workshops, you did direct me to work on kind of a review of best practices with nonprofit funding, and so that is what we've gone on for one of our summer projects, if you wanna call it that, but we do plan to bring that back.
Okay.
And we can include this as well.
I don't anticipate the committee discussing the remaining funding until the materials are provided, though.
Okay.
That was my understanding.
Okay.
All right. Other new business, crosswalk safety, that's all I'll say on that. Others, more new business items, discussion?
I just wanted to say, as we saw tonight with the greenways and, as we talk more about them and we do, as we do our developments requiring greenways, we are gonna have to really think about where greenway placement. You know, it's really tough, because we know people want them, but not in my backyard, so, which is understandable, after touring some of the greenways last week, a lot of them go through backyards, so we're gonna, as we go, so we're gonna have to really look at that and how that's gonna impact, because it could become much more expensive to build a greenway if we do, if we do it other ways, so, I know, I've talked to the experts about that.
Right.
Okay, that's nice.
Other comments?
I just wanted to say that Spring Fling was really fun, and I wanted to commend the staff for bringing it inside, and it was, it's amazing what they did, and it was a great event, and everybody had a great time, and I think some kids made out with a lot of eggs. So, thank you for, for being flexible with the weather, it was great.
It was a good event.
Else? Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, I do have a few items, a handful of items, I'll try to run through them quickly, though. One, yes, just to echo, wanted to make a comment as well, thank the staff with Parks and Recreation for the adjustment at the last minute related to the weather and moving inside, and I think that worked out really well, and so I just want to thank Adam Huffman and Leanne Plummer and the entire team for their work on that, so, it was a great event. The, one other item, the, North Carolina League of Municipalities has their City Vision Conference, this is their main annual conference, it is in Hickory on May 14th through the 16th. On the May 14th, we do have the recommended budget presentation that evening, but certainly council members could go that in the remaining following two days. But if you do have an interest, the deadline, I think, is nearing, is the 21st of, 21st? 21st of April, so if any of you do have an interest to attend, if you'll let Lyndon know, then we'll make sure to get you registered. We have Springs Fest coming up here on Saturday, April 27th, and that starts at 10:00 AM, it goes from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM in downtown Holly Springs, so we're looking forward to that opportunity, and the Holly Springs Chamber of Commerce leading that and working very hard with us and other partners to help have a great event, an inaugural event, and so that is coming together, and appreciate staff's work on that particular component. There's gonna be vendor tans, food trucks, I think a beer garden, and there's also a race that precedes it, that'll be starting at Sug Farm, and so, a great day, and hopefully we have great weather for that event. The next couple of items are related, we, you all have seen some of the emails related to Senate Bill 367 that relates to the regulation of removal of trees, and then there's also been some conversation, maybe not as much, but there's another bill, HB 675, related to making changes to the land use regulation, and both of those bills, I know, staff and the town attorney and myself are, are following and tracking. The tree ordinance, one in particular, would preempt, you know, most local government tree regulation ordinances in the state. I, I think, I, I think I, I know this, I'd like, I think I know the sentiment of the group in terms of where you are on, on tree preservation, and with that, you know, I don't think this is a, a bill that's in our interest, and it's the one that, that we are tracking, and so I wanted just to test a little bit with the, the council, we are tracking this, but if you'd like, myself or the attorney, to have any further engagement with our elected officials, we're happy to do that on behalf of the council.
I approve of that.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great. Anything you'd add to that this time? Okay, great. Two more items, we're making good, good progress here. The, the next one, the transportation impact analysis, you had requested a briefing back on that, and staff, we've had some internal conversation about having it with the planning board as well, both groups have an interest to get more information on this, we thought one time together, you know, to, to knock it out and for both groups to have, see what questions come up. We've been trying to put together one possibly for June, or sorry, not June, April 30th, that's a Thursday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, sorry, that's a Tuesday. And on that night, though, you have the Utley Creek Greenway Community Engagement Opportunity that's in, in, in this building from 6:00 until 8:00 that evening, I don't know if some of you have an interest to also attend that, what we're kind of tentatively thinking of is if it would work with, with the majority of you and the planning board members, we'd start at, maybe have dinner starting at 5:30 and, and start at 6:00 with the, with the, with the presentation. That would give you a little bit of opportunity, maybe on that front side, if you wanted to attend the, the Utley Creek Open House, but, but there is that conflict that evening, but we're gonna try to shoot for that unless you'd like us to look for another particular date.
Randy, I had that from 5:00 to 7:00 on my calendar, so now you're saying it's from 6:00 to 8:00?
The Utley Creek?
The Greenway?
I misspoke, it's, it's 5:00 to 7:00.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for the correction.
So 5:00 to 7:00, so if we did this starting at 6:00, that gave us, that gave us an hour, I'm comfortable with that.
All right, we'll, we'll continue to move forward and, and try to coordinate that, we'll confirm back with you, but we will work with you and the planning board to try to make that happen.
Okay.
Great, the, the last item is a calendar-related item, just to see if you want to adjust or cancel any particular meetings, coming up on, after the budget presentation, you generally have a workshop after that, after the presentation, and I'd like to throw out a date of May 23rd, that's a Thursday for that workshop, the reason, the previous Tuesday will be the public hearing on the budget, and that would then give you an opportunity right after the public hearing then to weigh in any comments that occur there, while it's fresh in your memory before going off on Memorial Day holiday weekend, and a chance to give any particular feedback or make any adjustments to the recommendation at that particular time. So that's one date, I'm, I'll give you three dates here and then we can go back and, and, or three other issues I want to bring up. The second potential meeting adjustment would be on July 2nd, that is a town council meeting, that's also the week of the July 4th holiday, July 4th or on the Thursday. The following Tuesday, we do have the workshop, but wanted to test with you if the council would like to cancel that July 2nd council meeting. And then the third one is in August, you're scheduled to have a workshop there that second Tuesday in August, and just an opportunity, maybe cancel that particular meeting, I know I will be gone that particular day, and school is starting to get ramped back up, maybe some last-minute vacations, and as I just give you and staff a little bit of an additional break. So maybe going back then to the first one, the, the budget workshop, if the 23rd is something that you'd like to consider, at...
30th or 23rd? I thought you said...
The 23rd of May.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So you're gonna present the budget on the 14th?
Correct.
And then have it...
Okay, I was thinking we were gonna, so the...
The 21st.
No, the 23rd would be, the 21st would be the public hearing and the 23rd would be a budget workshop where we can then have that week and a half to go through the budget, get the public hearing input, and then come back and discuss it some more on the 23rd, is what you're proposing?
I think so, let me, let me see if I can summarize, so, the, the recommendation is on the 14th of May, and then on the 21st, currently in your, in your adopted calendar is the, the public hearing. Sometime, it's at your pleasure sometimes, if you want to hear the public's input before you go and, and review the budget in a little bit more detail, you have that context, if something were to come up that, that you think is material and you want to change in the budget, but we could certainly do it any other time with the pleasure of, of the council.
And we have to approve it by the 30th of June?
By July 1.
July 1. I think it works.
I think I'm out of town, I'll come back for the 23rd. I'm at the beach that week, but I can come back.
It's, it's right before Memorial Day, so it's not ideal, like we could, you wanna go another week?
We can go to...
The 30th?
The 28th.
A week later, what is that?
The week later would be the 28th.
It's a day after, oh, I guess everybody's back to work, right?
That would be another option.
I would prefer that, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I think the 28th would probably be better since we're all back, right? I think so.
It's a public meeting, right? Is the workshop a public meeting?
Yes.
So then it might be even better if people want to hear.
And we have four meetings in a row in May, 7, 14, 21, 28, four Tuesdays, but it is better than that Thursday, I think.
Yeah.
That's fine, yeah, okay. Plan, we'll, and we'll, of course, we'll bring this back for a formal vote at your next meeting to adjust your calendar, but we'll plan for the workshop then on the 28th, and then on July 2nd, that town council meeting, whether or not you'd like to go ahead and cancel that one.
Question, didn't we cancel our July meeting last year, John?
We always have.
The 4th, yeah.
And Campo does the same thing, just, just comment.
Yeah, I'm fine canceling the 2nd and that workshop in August.
Yeah.
I agree.
No qualms.
Okay.
If we need a meeting, we'll call one, but...
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, great, well, what we'll do then is at your mar, your, your, your first meeting there in May, we'll have a consent agenda item to adjust your calendar to reflect those